This time I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Village of Bartlett, Counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane. Please call the roll.
Michelle Sarwas. John Baderman.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
George Cozio.
Here.
Bob Bacaro.
Here.
John Miaso.
Here.
Julie Capodacakis.
Here.
Amy McSwain.
Here.
Mike Weirden.
Here.
You have before you the minutes from the March 6th meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
John Baderman.
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
George Cozio.
Yes.
Bob Bacaro.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Julie Capodacakis.
Yes.
Amy McSwain.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes.
At this point, we have the public forum. If there is any... It is. Public forum, if you want to address this board about anything that's not on tonight's agenda. If anybody would like to address us, please raise your hand. Okay, the other thing, if you plan to speak tonight for any one of the three hearings, please be sure to fill out one of the forms in the back so that they don't have to swear you in. And give it to Kim, and then she will call you up one by one. Okay, the first case is case number 25-03. The property at 27W 637 Devon Avenue. Are the petitioners present? Please step up to the mic, raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
And do we have the mailings, the newspapers, and the picture of the sign?
We do.
Art those exhibits A, B, and C. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ed Kalesinski, and I live at 456 Sundance Drive in Bartlett, Illinois.
Go ahead and...
I am the owner also of 27W 637 Devon in Bartlett, which is currently zoned B2. I had that incorporated into Bartlett in 89, I believe it was, and zoned B2. Since then, a lot of... Hello? Oh, I'm sorry. Since then, a lot of things that were supposed to happen never happened. Good?
Does.
Do you want them to use the portable microphone? That might just better.
Hello? Okay, there we go.
Ah.
Should I start from the beginning?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, okay. My name is Ed Kalesinski. I live at 456 Sundance Drive, Bartlett, Illinois. I also own the property at 27W 637 Devon. When I bought it, it was unincorporated, DuPage. I had it incorporated into Bartlett in right around 1989 and zoned B2 for the purpose of having a real estate office. It's continued to be a real estate office, and it's gotten to the point now that I need to do something different with the property. The items that were told to me back in 89, not just by the village, but the county and the things that were supposed to happen in that general area have never happened. I tried to see if maybe I'd sell it or do something else, and what cost was not in my capacity to do. So I decided to go back to residential because the highest and best use for that property is residential, as that I have a single family on both sides. I have a church across the street. The people just to the north of me, the flags, which is also B2 and the same type of a property with a building that's a ranch, mine's a Cape Cod, they tried selling theirs for six years. Over six years, they tried selling their property and could not sell it. It's just not in... It's not in the thing to do. Back in the 80s, the old town look people had for offices, were glad to have the house look, and it worked well for us for a long time. They could not sell it after six years, so they had to move out because they weren't getting a retail walk-in. On top of that, now for the last year, they've tried to rent it, and office rentals just aren't having it, especially in a home atmosphere. It's a house, you know, both those properties are houses. And so they moved out, and it's vacant now, it's sitting there, and they still haven't been able to rent that. So I'm 76 years old. You know, I'm at a point in my life that I, you know, I got to make a decision, is this good for my family to leave this? I love this property. I love Bartlett. I've been here since 1970. So I have three properties here, and the highest and best use for this property, I believe at this point, is residential. It's about almost an acre and a half. And as a matter of fact, when we were selling real estate and people were coming in, everybody said, "Is this house for sale?" They all wanted the house. So I figured they wanted to live there. So when I... In my estate, I wanted to leave it to my daughter. My grandson has Down Syndrome, and she's struggling, so I want her to have something good for the family. So it's my legacy to them, and I think at the highest, like I said, the highest and best use for this property would be the R2 zoning. And I thank you, you know, for hearing my case.
I take it the real estate part of it is gone or will be gone shortly?
No, I have a virtual office out of my home.
Okay.
So I won't give up my real estate licenses, but I've been a broker manager for almost 50 years now, so 45... Excuse me, 45 years. So but as far as doing business out of that house, there's not going to be any business. Everything is... And real estate has changed from what it was before.
Right, right. Kristi, did you get any calls on this?
We didn't have any calls on this one, no.
Okay. Anybody from the board, any questions? At this point, we'll open this up to the public. Does anyone in the audience have any questions on this case? Any further discussion or motions?
Staff recommends approval. Subject to the conditions and findings of fact.
Board, anyone going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion on case 25-03, 27W 637 Devon, rezoning from B2 to ER2. Make a motion that we pass on a positive recommendation based on the findings of fact and the information received in the memo from staff.
At this point, we have a motion on the floor. I shall close the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by John?
A second.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
John Baderman.
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
George Cozio.
Yes.
Bob Bacaro.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Julie Capodacakis.
Yes.
Amy McSwain.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes.
Okay, we'll pass on a positive recommendation. Stay in touch with them to find out when it appears on the board agenda.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is... We... Okay, case number 18-05, TLE Devon and Prospect Avenue. Are the petitioners present? Please raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper article, and the sign?
Yes.
Art those exhibits A, B, and C. Please state your name and address for the record, and go ahead and present your case.
My name is Anthony DeAngelis. You want my home address or work address?
Work address is fine.
2221 Camden Court, Oakbrook, Illinois. Oh, I'm sorry. Everybody hear me okay? I usually have a pretty loud voice to begin with, so at least that's what my wife and children tell me. Again, I'm Anthony DeAngelis. I represent... I'm the EVP of Development for Intercontinental Real Estate and Development, the project developer for this property. I'd like to just give a quick little backstory or history as to how we got here. This wasn't something that just started in the last year or two. We actually acquired this site back in late 2017 from Republic Bank of Chicago after the failed attempt to develop it as the Ashton Gardens banquet facility. We started working on potential plans in 2018 and initially found the Learning Experience, which is still the same tenant today that we're proposing for Phase 1, but started working with them, started working on plans, went through several reviews. Were basically in a position to submit for special use and final approvals when low and behold, COVID hit in early 2020. At that time, with the lockdown and the shutdown by the governor, it basically put all the daycare facilities, I wouldn't say out of business, but basically shut them down to where they could no longer operate. As a result, TLE, and I had already developed four or five of these around Chicago, terminated the lease, and we were not in a position at that point to go forward. So fast forward to 2024, I went back and reapproached TLE, which is actually the nation's fastest-growing early education childcare company in the country with 600 facilities either operating or under development currently. And reapproached them, we were able to renegotiate a new lease and get them back committed to this site. At that point, we started pursuing the new engineering and approvals that we needed to do. So that takes us today. So here's the site, once again, at the southwest corner of Devon and Prospect. It's 3.85 acres, zone B3 commercial. We're looking for special use approval first for a plan unit development based on the fact that we will be subdividing the lot into three separate lots to accommodate the overall development plan, to accommodate the phasing, and the different uses that we're proposing. As a result, staff and ourselves felt that a plan unit development, which is pretty common these days, was the most appropriate way to approach the project. So there you can see the proposed subdivision plan. This is Phase 1. Phase 1 will include the Learning Experience daycare, early education facility, and all the other improvements in terms of the access road, utilities, grading, and the stormwater management facility, and all the landscaping that you see on this plan. So basically, we would have Lot 2 would be graded and seeded until we figure out what the final development plan looks like, which we'll get into in a minute, the two options that we're looking at. But just as far as Phase 1 goes, TLE, for those who aren't familiar, again, is a national early education daycare provider. It's a 10,000-square-foot building with approximately 10 classrooms, providing early education and childcare facilities for children from ages 6 weeks to almost 6 years old. There's a 5,000-square-foot playground divided into two separate playgrounds for age-appropriate play, as you can see behind it, to the west of the building. The site will include 43 parking spaces, which is almost double what the requirement is, but that is a tenant or user requirement. And just for background, this is a full, like, build-to-suit-with-a-lease-type development. So in other words, we are in charge with building it, basically outfitting it completely in terms of the tenant build-out, and more or less handing over the keys to them with a facility that's ready for license, final approval, and operation, which is the way we've done the other facilities as well. We did, in the planning for this site, we are obviously very cognizant that it is surrounded by a single-family residential. We have done our best in working with staff and our consultants to position things so that they're as close to the street as possible, creating as much buffer between the developed area, the building, the parking, and the residential homes. As you can see by nature of where the stormwater detention is located, we have a 20-foot landscape buffer that also goes around the entire site. Again, doing our best to try and integrate the project as nicely into the neighborhood as we can, but still maintaining a commercially viable development. This is a building elevation for the Learning Experience facility. We did our best to convince the tenant, originally the prototype that they want to use, which they're using around the country, is a fair amount different than this. It's more commercial or institutional-looking. We got them to agree to kind of, I should say, suburbanize it and make it more residential-friendly by introducing a warmer color palette, more neutral, natural tones to the exterior masonry and the hardy panels. We got them to agree to a more traditional asphalt pitched roof over the entrance as opposed to a typical straight facade that they're used to seeing, that again gives more of a commercial kind of retail or office-type look. We think it'll integrate well with the surrounding area. Again, if I would have showed you some of the first elevations that they gave us, you probably would have said, "No way." And I said, "No way" as well. So but again, we think we found a good balance, and we think it'll work well with the site, given its location. Moving on to Phase 2, we had two plans in working with staff. We thought it was best to come up with a couple different options so that we can effectively market the site and see what the highest and best users are that would want to be in this location. So this plan here involves more traditional retail, two separate buildings. Again, up against Prospect and Devon, as close as we can get them, as far away from the residential as possible. We got a nice landscape buffer as well around them. We did... We are proposing one potential quick-serve restaurant space with a drive-through. Ever since COVID, you'd be hard-pressed to find any type of quick-service or fast-casual restaurant that would go anywhere without a drive-through. We've achieved a 14-car stacking drive-through with a bypass lane, and again, all of that is between the building and Devon, so the traffic is staying as close to the corner and the intersection as possible. We're proposing, again, right in, right out. On Devon Avenue, we've been working... We had preliminary approval from DuPage County Highway Department already, subject to final zoning, so we can finalize that permit. The only full access will be off of Prospect. We basically had to put it in that location to stay away from the intersection and the turn lane that is currently existing and avoid traffic conflicts there. But in order for any type of commercial project like this to be viable, we have to have full access somewhere, and we knew that it was highly unlikely on Devon Avenue, given everything that's going on there and the proximity to the intersection. So that's where it has to be, is on Prospect, in that location. So again, we don't have specific users yet for this plan. We... The whole idea is to get the special use approved and preliminary plan approved so we can effectively market it and come up with a list of users who will either make or break the development as far as going this direction or the other direction. Option B would be more of a traditional full-service-type restaurant, again, more or less in the same location as the other retail building along Devon with a large outdoor patio dining area. This building is shown conceptually at 6,500 square feet. More than likely, it would be... Could be probably smaller than that. There's not too many of that size being done today typically, but you never know. We want to get it approved preliminarily for the largest use, so we... Our largest-size user, just to make it easier again when talking with these users and avoiding a long due diligence period and evaluation period. A lot of them don't want to waste a lot of time and energy if they have to go forward and get all of these approvals on their own. So we would have to come back, obviously, with a definitive plan for Phase 2 that shows who the users are and gives you building elevations and everything else, just like we're doing already for Phase 1 for the TLE. This site has 50-car parking, whether it be under Option B or Option A, the, like I said, 43 cars for the TLE facility, and I've negotiated a non-exclusive parking agreement with the TLE so that after 6:00 PM during weekday, Monday through Friday, and all day on the weekends, there's no exclusive parking. So in other words, any of the retail or quasi-retail service-type users could utilize the daycare parking, or the restaurant that would go under Option B could utilize the daycare parking, which would increase the parking count to 93 spaces, which we believe is more than adequate for this type of neighborhood location. So other than that, that's the extent of my presentation, unless there's other questions you guys have or however you want to proceed.
I think the staff is going to...
I can give a little bit more context to the nature of this site as well. Originally, the site was annexed with all of the residential properties in 1963 and '78, or and as part of that '63 annexation, this property was zoned manufacturing, when it was thought that this whole area would be manufacturing. In 1978, in the big rezoning, comprehensive rezoning that the village did, it was rezoned to be B3, which currently is now. And then in 1988, the parcel was resubdivided, and a site plan was approved to build a commercial strip that was much larger than this and on the south side of the lot, so with its rear-facing all of those homes. That site was obviously... Or that plan was obviously not approved or not built, approved but not built. The petitioner is, of course, seeking approval for a special use permit for a plan unit development and preliminary final subdivision and PUD. Lot 1, again, is going for final PUD approval. Lot 2 is going for preliminary PUD approval as well as special use permits for the drive-through and restaurant to serve liquor. Like was mentioned before, the site will be accessed on the right in, right out on Devon Avenue, and then full access curb cut on Prospect. In your packets, a traffic study was conducted on the site, and it was concluded that the proposed development would not have a negative impact on the surrounding roadways. Based on that, the staff recommends approval of the petitioner's request for special use permits, a plan unit development, restaurant to serve liquor and a drive-through, and the preliminary and final plan of subdivision, and site PUD plan, subject to the conditions and findings of fact.
I think we were supposed to have this as Exhibit D.
Yes, we also did receive some public comment. That, which you've received up there, is one of the... Is the only written piece of testimony that we received, to summarize, that proposes some additional... Or requests some additional landscaping on the south side. This was one of the homeowners on that south parcel requesting additional landscaping and evergreen trees. The other comments that we got, we received six phone calls in total. Most of them were positive. None of them had any negative feedback to give. We did receive one that opposed to the idea of having a liquor license be approved adjacent to a residential area and a daycare center, but all the rest of the comments were positive.
What do you envision as the proposed hours of operation?
For what? I'm sorry?
The daycare as well as the restaurant.
Well, I can tell you that the daycare is typically 6:30 AM to 6:30 PM. You know, it's subject to the operator's discretion, but that's generally what their hours are, Monday through Friday. The restaurant, it's really hard to speculate at this point. It all depends on who it is that's going there and the nature of their restaurant. But, you know, I'm sure they will take into consideration their location, and hours of operation will reflect the fact that they're in a neighborhood location like they will be, and I don't see it being anything, you know, some type of late-night liquor license or anything like that, no.
Had an all-night.
No, no. I highly doubt it. I mean, I just don't... I don't envision it, and we would probably not necessarily encourage that anyways, that type of user.
And again, that Lot 2 will have to come back for final PUD approval.
Right, right. So all of those types of issues could be addressed, and questions could be answered at that time.
Any questions from the board?
Brian, what year were the houses to the west and to the south built?
They were all built shortly after the resubdivision in 89. As best as I can tell, they were built between 89 and 94, in that range somewhere.
And the initial B3 zoning was 1978 with the master rezoning?
Correct.
I believe it was manufacturing before that even, right?
Yeah, yeah. When it was originally annexed in '63, it was manufacturing, and then B3.
In the 1960s, there were signs up there about that. They were trying to advertise it, trying to get some manufacturing in there.
Mm-hmm.
When it was still cornfields around it.
So do we consider all of these in one, or can they be approved individually? Or what's... What is our plan?
It's up to whoever's saying the motions, how you want.
Okay.
Any further questions before we open it up to the public?
Yeah, before we... The fencing on the Learning Experience in the back, I didn't see height or material.
Yeah, sorry, I should have addressed that. You could see that the daycare has the playground, the two playgrounds are to the west of the building. They have a six-foot white vinyl fence because they want it for privacy for the kids and all that. That encloses their playground. And then, once their fence ends, per ordinance, we're required to install a four-foot, like, ornamental-type metal fence along with all the landscaping, but you can see there's like, there'll be a four-foot ornamental fence that goes all the way around, all the way over to Prospect. And then, obviously, the various landscaping, we're putting in 47 trees total on the site, 29 shade trees, 12 ornamentals, and six evergreens, most of which are located around that perimeter. And again, we have to stay within that 20-foot landscape buffer because once you get outside of that, you're into the stormwater management facility, which will be landscaped as well, but that's with, like, prairie grasses on the banks of the basin, and then like a wet mesic prairie, like, wetland-type plants, flowering plants that will be in the basin, the very bottom of the detention pond. So we can't put trees and stuff like that in there. They would never survive. But you could see that the landscaping goes all the way around and is, you know, between the fence and the development.
What about the lighting? I know there's some concerns about lighting. What... Did we do a lighting study on this, or should...
Yeah, photometric plan's been done.
Yes, we do have a photometric plan. They... All of those requirements are met, per code.
And again, keep in mind that all the parking is kind of, you know, even when you get to say under this circumstance, you know, most of the parking is in the center location of it, other than there'll probably be... I can't remember what kind of street lighting there is on Prospect out there right now as far as existing, but the light will definitely cut off at the property line. It's not going to spill over into the residence backyard. cut off at the property line. It's not going to spill over into the residence backyard. We'll make sure that it doesn't. And I'm pretty sure the photometrics substantiate that.
Will the daycare facility be a corporate-operated daycare, or is it a franchise?
It depends. They do both, okay? They haven't made a formal, they start out corporately, and they may choose to continue to operate it, but they have several very successful franchisees who, you know, are multi-unit operators who are active in this area, too. And to be perfectly honest, in my experience, the franchise operators tend to do a better job, I think, because they have a vested interest in the community. It's their money that's invested in this facility. I'm not, nothing against corporate, but they're busy doing lots of things, you know, and they have to just hire people to come run it. It's not the owner entrepreneur who's running it on a day-to-day basis. That's my opinion, but it could be one way or the other. It hasn't been determined yet.
Anyone else? At this point, we shall open it up to the public. If you have something to say, make sure that you've filled out a slip, and they will call your name.
Anthony Brocato.
Hello, my name's Anthony Brocato. I'm just coming to state my concerns or objections. Can you hear me?
Ah, sorry. Again, please.
My name's Anthony Brocato. I'm just here to state my objections or concerns based on the quick-service restaurant and the liquor license. I believe it was said before that operating a liquor, liquor store or liquor facility close to kids and in the neighboring area is probably not the best of ideas. There's other areas, I think, that are open for lease that would be in a more commercialized area and some, of some of Bartlett. I think they add a traffic for the quick-service restaurant, be kind of not beneficial. They add a waste and pollution possibly also coming from the refuse and/or food service containers that would be collected in the area. But that's just basically what I wanted to come here and state in front of all you.
I also have similar concerns.
Name please.
The last gentleman.
Name please.
Your name, please. Chris Dayton. I live locally. I walk with my family pretty often along both the walk adjacent to it and the bike path. I think the increase in traffic will sort of prohibit that, especially with a quick-service restaurant. There will be a lot of cars coming in and out. I know there was a traffic study done that says there won't be an impact in the area. I don't see how that could be possible, considering you're adding that many parking spaces and multiple new businesses. I also know that there won't be any dedicated left-turn lane into the main entrance. I think the liquor license is also a problem, because we, within walking distance, have multiple liquor stores or stores that sell alcohol. One more isn't something we necessarily need adjacent to multiple residential areas. I understand that it's zoned commercial. It will be developed no matter what. I just don't think this is the correct use of the space.
C. Ballademas.
Hello, my name's Chris Ballademas. I live at 224 Lido Trail. So I'm directly impacted by this. I feel that it's a little congested for what it is, for the space. I have a few concerns. A, traffic volume. B, the drive-through. I really don't want a Burger King in my backyard. And this restaurant with the outside, I don't know, are you going to have music bands? It's, it's a little vague on what that's going to be. I bought the property anticipating that nothing would be there. Here we are. I was optimistic maybe it would be rezone residential. I bought it hoping to be my last home, and if this goes up, I'm considering moving. I just, I'm not keen on it. Thank you.
Brian Hunt.
Brian Hunt, I'm at 228 Lido Trail, which is the, the house on the, the corner there. We have a lot of concerns. My wife later will read something that she wrote that really puts them all out there. I feel like that this plan really put out a lot of ideas to test boundaries. There seems to be a lot in the plans that are just bad ideas for a residential area. As other people have said, at some point, you know, something's going to be built there. We hope something could be built there that will not hurt our property values, that I won't look out my back window and have to see lights from a restaurant or a convenience store. There is a, there is a bar across the street in the 7-Eleven already. I will tell you, there is issues with that. We hear them, we see them. It's, it's not ideal. We're very concerned about this, I call it a road, that's coming off of Prospect that is very close to our backyard. I also see parking spaces back there that are very close to our backyards. We want to be able to, you know, enjoy our backyard and, and have it be peaceful, whatever's there. Hours of operation are obviously very important on the weekend when I'm at home and I'm in my backyard and I want to grill something. I don't want to be hearing music, lights, cars. We want a peaceful area, so whatever's put here, we hope that that can be kept in mind, that it would be something, obviously, this will very much, the Lot Two part will very much hurt our home values. So, thank you. 228 Lido Trail on the corner. So, very much affected by this.
Rebecca Hunt.
Rebecca Hunt, I am his wife at 228 Lido Trail. We are the house on the corner directly impacted by the main entrance to this proposed property. We've lived here for almost four years with our two young children. One of the things that we've noticed and loved about Bartlett are its green spaces with parks and forest preserves, bike trails and pedestrian walking paths. Bartlett is a comfortable, beautiful place to live. I've noticed its well-planned spaces where residential homes and commercial properties each have their place. Even when commercial property and residential property do meet, there's ample green space to separate them. The site for this commercial plan is a small residential development in a part of Bartlett that is 100% residential. Yet, this proposed plan wants to drop a fast-food drive-through with a main entrance not 20 feet from my backyard. There is no ample green space to separate my property from the parking lot or the noise of the traffic coming and going from the parking lot. What does that do to my property value or my family's well-being? The proposed plan claims to offer uses that are not currently available in the immediate vicinity, but the plan does not offer something that is new or beneficial to the community. There is a 7-Eleven at the corner. There are restaurants that serve liquor within walking distance. A restaurant and drive-through are businesses that operate long hours through the evening and on weekends. Imagine, I want to have a nice summer evening on my patio, grilling and eating with my family. All the while, we're hearing cars coming and going from the restaurant on the other side of our fence and voices of other diners overshadowing our own conversation. This is not the pleasant Bartlett that we chose to live in. When we chose to live here on this particular lot, we also noticed the number of bicycles and pedestrians that ride, walk, and run up and down the sidewalk on Prospect. There's families with children on their way to the park, families with infants out for a stroll, women and men walking their dogs, runners out for a jog, young kids on their scooters headed to the 7-Eleven or the ice cream shop. They stop, they talk to us. We're on the corner. I see this every day. I love this about where I live. How does putting a drive-through on the corner promote these values in the community? The sidewalk along Devon is a proposed bike path, according to the village bike path map. I see it used for that purpose every day, from my kitchen window. I'm concerned about a venue serving liquor behind my house with my young children who are here today playing in the backyard. I'm concerned about the amount of traffic that might divert into our neighborhood because they missed the entrance to the parking lot. I'm concerned about the congestion on Prospect Avenue that is so near to my home. I'm concerned about the vehicular noise and the noise of diners and shoppers in my backyard. I'm concerned about the lights that cannot be blocked from my upstairs windows that will forever look over a parking lot. I ask that you just take my words into consideration and plan for the best. Thank you for your time.
Yep. I'm going to have to move this down. Good evening, Joanne Kelchbrunner. I wanted to thank staff. I talked to them about the project a little bit of detail, and they were very gracious with their time. My only question is, because this is a planned unit development and a subdivision, that the pathway, sidewalks are required. The village board has the ability to wave the sidewalk in lieu of a bike path. The bike path there is, I am a runner, is not in great shape, so I would request that that be replaced by the developer. I wasn't sure on the plans. It is substandard, as well as the sidewalk is a little narrow. So that's my only comment, is the sidewalk and the pathway. Thank you.
You're talking, excuse me, along Devon, I assume, the bike path there? That's the multi-use path? Yeah, because the other one's just a sidewalk.
Robert Passata.
Good evening, Rob Pasta, 421 Deanna Drive. Thank you all for considering our comments and the impact this is going to have on the community. I haven't heard any negative comments about the daycare center, the Phase One plan, but Phase Two seems fraught with problems and sort of half-baked at this point. Parking spots facing homes, lights being shined in people's backyards, entrance very close to residential neighborhood. I would encourage the board to reject the preliminary approval of Phase Two until a more fully baked proposal is made and the, the impact on the neighbors are addressed. Thank you.
Heather Matthews.
Hello, my name is Heather Matthews. I live at 409 Hillendale Drive, so my house directly backs up to this, and I will be, and my family will be personally affected. So this space here, as you know, this is not the first request they've had for this space. And the reason things keep failing is because they keep trying, trying to cram too much onto this small lot. As we discussed, it's only 3.8 acres, and it's not big enough for the, the sheer volume of stuff that they keep trying to put on there for profits. And so I'm not opposed to a development in theory, but we need one that is friendly to the neighborhood around it if, if it is implemented. As you noted, the, the decision to zone it, B3, was made before that neighborhood even existed. So there may be a need to even reevaluate the zoning to accommodate the neighborhood that is now established around it. This neighborhood has a massive amount of children. I can tell you, I have 15 children under the age of 12 within a three-house radius of my house. If you, I remember when neighbors moved in and they said, "Yeah, we thought you were having a birthday party on a Tuesday afternoon." And no, that was just all the kids. It's like, they go from house to house, and it's amazing. It's like, when I was a kid and the kids, like, come in at, when the sun, the streetlights come on or the sun goes down, it's wonderful to be able to have a neighborhood where our kids can and do play outside all day, every day, which is fantastic, because rare to find that for kids these days, and we have it. But because there are kids running across the street and around there all the time, we need to make sure that we are being very intentional about safety with this. And that is not happening with this plan. So you will not find another place in the village where there is a bike path and not a turn lane next to the bike path to, if you're going into a development. Like, think by Walgreens at 59. You know, there's turn lanes there where there's the bike path. Here, there's no turn lane, so there's nothing to protect the bikers or to give the drivers an opportunity to pause when they're going on Devon and turning into, into that side road. We also have had zero attempts to engage the neighborhood and the community on this in order to find, you know, workable solutions or development opportunities that might be more workable and amenable to the neighbors. They have not attempted to engage us at all. If you check out the reviews of the learning experience also, I'd encourage you to Google them. They are characterized very, very poorly. Some people say one of the worst corporate daycares they've ever seen, curriculum not developmentally appropriate. It's just like a quick Google search. Kids forced to watch an hour a day of videos of their corporate mascot teaching lessons on a, on a smartboard. We have two daycares already within a six-block radius. We have Kripa, and we have Friendship Corner. This will not add anything new or special to that area. We also need to learn from past mistakes, you know, the village has made in developments like this. So if we look at the Chesterbrook Culvers area development, you'll see that that road is full of potholes. And there's a lot of debate on who owns the road. What it comes down to is if the daycare owns it, they don't have the money to resurface all that road because they don't have the profit margins to do so, because daycares don't turn a big profit. And so we will end up with the same type of thing here, where it's full of potholes after five, 10 years. And we see no plans to address that or mitigate that. The, so, you know, we need to make sure that's addressed. We also see that every month when Chesterbrook has a curriculum night or a holiday event or, you know, things, there are holiday parties, things like that, the entire road and the whole neighborhood next to it gets parked up. And so we shouldn't, our neighborhood shouldn't have to bear the impact of, of something, of a development next to it. They should be required to have the parking for those type of events. On top of that, we know that restaurant and retail already have high vacancy rates in our neighborhood and even within a six-block radius of us. And so there are already openings there. We don't need more restaurant and retail within a six-block radius of us. The daycare does, even though 43 parking spots is required, that's still insufficient when you consider that they'll need about 25 parking spots just for staff minimum. You have to have at least two staff per room, and many of the infant classes have to have four staff. They have very tight staffing ratios. If you go to Chesterbrook and just drive by there and, like, the morning and drop-off time, you'll see that there are parking issues every single morning at Chesterbrook due to insufficient parking. On top of that, there are, I'm sorry, the traffic study did note that there are potential issues with the fast-food restaurant due to increased fast-food volume, traffic volumes to there post-COVID. And so there were some findings highlighted in the actual text of the village report that they didn't speak to here. On top of that, they did not appear to explore pedestrian impacts or bicycle impacts, and they explored traffic or vehicular impacts. And with that being not just a bike path there, but there's a bike- but there's a bike path farther down on Prospect, just past between Amherst and Wilcox. And so we have a lot of traffic on that corner. The pedestrian and vehicular traffic has, or pedestrian and bicycle traffic has also increased dramatically in the past few years with the developments of Aldi, Cherry on Top, all of the businesses that are, and restaurants that are near the Aldi now. And so with that, we need, we, when I'm turning from Hillendale onto Devon, it is very rare that I can turn at all right now without having to pause for bicyclists or pedestrians. So we need a traffic plan that is friendly to that, the bicycle and traffic path as well. And like, really what we need is, we need a safer Devon Avenue overall. We've been pushing the village for this for many years. We've asked for, you know, having it one lane each way with a median because there's so many issues, safety issues, with kids and families crossing Devon Avenue and are almost getting hit now that they're trying to go to the ice cream shop and stuff like that. And they've said, "Well, it's really hard to make that happen because it's multi-county road." But really, we need this place, this area to be even safer, not even less safe. So if you can't find a development that's like a business development that will work, then maybe it needs to be rezoned. But overall, it needs to be friendly to the residents, no matter what. So thank you for your time.
Excuse me. What were the two daycares you talked about?
Kripa is by Midway Landing. And then Friendship Corner is on Devon Avenue right after it turns into like, right by the 27 West 26, like by the church.
Yep, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
You know, I did have another one.
You did?
Yeah, the potholes.
Yes.
Which, I didn't catch what street or what you were talking about.
Oh, so if you go by, for the potholes, if you go by Chesterbrook Culvers Goodwill area, they have a similar side road model.
So you're already, you're talking about someplace away from this area?
Right, but it's the same model. And so if you look at the condition of that road, because no one owns the road, it is insanely full of potholes. My kids went to Chesterbrook for 10 years. We've had tires popped on it. You could go look, it's bad.
Quincy Bridge?
Thank you.
Right, by Quincy Bridge, exactly, yep. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pratik Patel. I am 413 Hillendale, so right next to Heather, the fourth house, yep. As Heather mentioned and everyone else has mentioned here, that we have a ton of kids. I have two of my own, under 12 years old, all around the neighborhood. And I think the neighborhood's going to continue to grow with more kids as some of these houses are older and empty nesters. So we are getting new families moving in as well. So we can only expect more kids to be around this area. The commercial development here, I don't believe suits the neighborhood, given the traffic, given the fact that we are now taking away the bike path. I don't know how you can bike with cars coming through that right-hand turn off of Devon. So yeah, I am opposed to this, as well as, you know, possibly reevaluating it for residential. Thank you.
Hello, Monica Wodkowsky. I'm directly impacted by this. I'm at 220 Lito, so I'm right on the corner in the residential, right in the middle. I moved here in around, right around 2020. The thing that drew me into this neighborhood was because it was so quiet. It was all residential, it's all families, multiple kids. Now, we fast forward to this, and I have one question for you guys. If you do have kids yourselves, would you want a restaurant with alcohol, serving alcohol, God knows what hours of the day in your backyard with so many kids in the area? I know nobody addressed the daycare. I have kids myself. I don't want this daycare in my backyard either. Why? From 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, all I'm going to be hearing is kids in the playground. I will literally directly, directly be staring at this playground. And I know, yes, it's a family-oriented place, but I also don't want this in my backyard. There's multiple daycares around, like my neighbor did say, but they're away from residents. We want the peace and quiet. With the restaurant serving alcohol there, having parties, Super Bowls, whatever you want to call any parties, that overflow of the parking that's not there is going to flow right into my area. Right now, we already have to have our sides blocked off for whatever, fireworks or whatnot. We're not going to have this done every day for us. So all this overflow is going to be right in my front yard where my kids play. Any given time of the day, we have 15 kids running around from house to house. More families are pregnant right now, more babies or whatever, kids are going to be in the area. I get that this is an open space, and we're not saying no, that we don't want any development there, but I think you guys should revisit to what should be there. Bartlett is known as a very family-oriented place, okay? It was rated, what, the safest place at some point a couple of years ago? You're going to throw this in there with the traffic and everything else? I just, I don't know how this is going to work. Build townhouses, build more houses, make it more family. Everything's strickling into that. That's what Bartlett is. Keep the businesses where there should be. We're never going to be, and I hate, I'm not going to, I hope, I'm not going to piss anybody off. We're not going to be the next Schaumburg, Woodfield. We're not going to be the next Bloomingdale, because we don't want that. Keep that traffic there. That's why we're being saved. That's why we're keeping this area so safe.
Just overall, man, I can't believe this is even shot in our face. You've got somebody from Oak Grove coming out here. There's 60.
Excuse me, you do not have the floor.
Sorry, it's my husband.
Derek Luthus, you were at the same residence, sorry, 200 Lito Trail.
Okay, you did not fill in a sheet.
We're at the same.
I have his name as Derek, it's the same last name.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
We're just concerned from a point of view that there's almost 60 homes over here in the subdivision paying close to $1 million, and then you have somebody that, with all due respect, would you want that coming out of your yard staring at that? If you can be just honest with me, would you want that in the back of your house? Whatever you're planning on building, just be honest. It's a simple question.
Proud of all the projects we do.
With due respect, you seem like a very reasonable.
Let him answer it, let him answer it.
I, I mean.
I, I was. Girls and a boy, you know, it's.
No offense, but I mean, when you buy adjacent to commercially zoned property, you have to expect that someday it's going to be commercial.
But alcohol places, they just gave more brewing, just built out, you know, there's places, like, I don't know, the next Schaumburg district of.
We already know more brewing doesn't have enough parking spots, and it's a bar. So what do they do? They overflow into the metro area. These people are going to overflow into the residential areas. The streets are adjacent around. What am I going to come out of my house and stare at 10 cars with drunk people walking in and out? And then what am I going to be calling, the police? I'm already getting overflow from people that are trying to avoid the Prospect-Don intersection there, and I've called police to put, like, the traffic light to monitor how many, how many cars are trying to go around. I don't know if he's done it or not. But now I'm going to have, I don't know how many more cars driving throughout the day, back and forth, back and forth, with kids, little kids. We have five, six, 10, whatever year-old kids running around. And that's why we're so safe there. We have one entrance in and out, and now you're going to put this right slap in my backyard with drunk people walking around.
Yes. Again, objection, thank you for your time.
Sorry, I'm just.
Good evening, my name is Mario Royba. I just recently bought a house. I live on 405 Hillendale, just behind where the daycare is being planned to be built. My concerns are around the liquor. I bought a house here in Bartlett to raise a family. I have a nine-month-old, and I plan on having more children. And it's very upsetting and discouraging to see that liquor is going to be put right in my backyard. Like many others, and many of my other neighbors have mentioned, it's difficult for families to want to stay in Bartlett. It's growing. I have, you know, I'm younger, on the younger side. I have friends that are having families that want to move around in this area. So to put danger in the backyard is difficult for anybody to want to have interest to move into residences around the Bartlett area. The daycare, it's, for me, you know, again, looking in, out my, you know, daughter's window, I'm going to be staring at that building. It is what it is, but for me, the liquor is a big no. That's not why, where I want to have, to raise my family. Thank you for listening.
Could you please tell, state your address again and where you're located?
405 Hillendale, so then right directly behind the, where the zone Phase One is planned.
How many houses down?
Right in my backyard, I'm sorry.
How many houses down?
So that'd be the second house down from Devon. Thank you.
That's it. Some of the things that were brought up, first of all, with the right-in, right-out on Devon Avenue that is controlled by DuPage County, and that is a good safety factor because it would be too hard to have people trying to turn left to go westbound on Devon Avenue. One concern that was brought up is the full-service entrance and exit there on Prospect. Do you know, Christie, or anyone, if there, is there plans to have a right-turn lane in there off of Prospect? Reason I'm asking is that they're talking about children on the sidewalk or bike path over there, and some people are careless and don't use their turn signals. If there's at least a right-turn lane in there, then the children on the sidewalk could see that the car's planning to get in there. And I see that as a safety factor.
Do you mean a left turn going north on Prospect?
No, when you're southbound on Prospect.
Oh, I understand.
Coming from Devon.
Not that I know of.
Want to go in there.
My concern was on the right turn, you know, from the off-road.
Okay, so there would not be a right-turn lane in there? Board, any other questions?
I don't know if there's even sufficient right-of-way to even, to do something like that.
Probably not.
To be honest, I mean, if you're just looking at it, you could see it's very limited, and you'd be into that sidewalk before you know it, before you got a full turn lane in there, which would be problematic too, right? Which is what you're trying to help.
I have a question.
Yes.
Could we discuss the parking? I don't know why this is so loud tonight.
You asked for the parking?
Uh, yes, I wanted to ask about the parking spots that the daycare is on there, that there seems to be a lot of position that we don't feel available sufficiently for the holidays or holidays and also staff.
So it exceeds our parking requirement in the code. So they're providing more than what we require.
Are you considering the facility being a daycare center and the amount of staff needed?
Again, they operate, you know, like I said, up to 600 either operating or under development, and we're adhering to their requirements, which typically do exceed local requirements in all the communities we've built them in. I mean, there's no question, at peak times, drop-off times, it's going to be a full lot, but during the day, you know, it's going to be half-empty, so. It's just during those peak times when they pull in and pull out.
Do you have any idea of their outdoor schedule? When the outdoor, this is for the daycare.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know exactly. They're not outside all day long, no. They're not. They have to be outside a certain minimum amount of time per licensing requirements from the state of Illinois. So I'm not sure what that schedule is, to be honest with you. I don't know, because I don't operate them, but.
I mean, I don't live in your area, but it seems to me the daycare, 6:30 to 6:30, are going to have drop-offs and pickups during those peak times. But for the majority of that time, it would seem to me the majority of the residents in that area for nine and a half months, for the children, they're in school, and the adults are working. There may be some retirees and some empty nesters, but by and large, it seems that the operation of the daycare will be during the day when the residents have their lives to live, much of it away from the residents. And then during the evening.
Could we keep it down, please?
During the evening, the place is closed. Now, I understand there are stay-at-home moms. I'm speaking more of a general, you know, you can't accommodate everybody, unfortunately.
Excuse me, you don't have the floor.
If you need to speak again, you may. That's your turn.
And if I could just add, I mean, there's always talk about a bar. Our intent is not to put a bar there. Our intent is, any, any restaurant today is going to want to have a bar. It's incidental to their operation. They're going to want to have the ability to serve alcohol. I have know very few, if any, who would not want that option. But that's not, I don't see that being, that is not the focus. And we have no intention of trying to source or bring in some operation like that. We don't think it's appropriate either for that location. So it's not like it's going to be some bar where the food is secondary and it's more about the alcohol. We see it more as a family-type, full-service restaurant operation.
And there are many of those in the village, and there are not problems.
And I know there's, I've been told by economic development, there's others looking for locations that, you know, can't find them. So we're hoping maybe we can, you know, connect with one of those users.
Is it a family-type restaurant, have a drive-thru, you're thinking?
Um, no, there's no, there's no drive-thru proposed for the rest, the full-service type restaurant. You can see, that's not the intent. It would just be for more of your quick-serve, you know, restaurant, you know, like a Chipotle or, you know, most of these users all want a drive-thru now for convenience for people that don't want to get out of their car, whether it's a coffee user or whoever. It's just integral to their operation anymore. And, you know, they won't consider new sites without them. And again, you can thank COVID for that mainly.
Kim has some more people who want to talk.
Hi, my name is Kathy Anna. I don't live over here. I live at 1015 Norman Lane, and it is over by the house, and I've not been noticed off of 59. And I will tell you, we have a daycare, and I moved in with the daycare there looking balanced. Absolutely fine, I had no problem with that. If someone could come please clean up all the garbage, I have to go literally every other day with rubber gloves and clean up disgusting garbage at McDonald's, if it's a drive-thru or whatever restaurant in my yard, okay? The daycare, you can't say that they're going to not clean up. I have two wonderful kids that grew up there. I've been there 22 years now. And your little ones, it's absolutely fine, but it goes from 6:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night. But the biggest thing, I cannot believe you would put a liquor store by the daycare. That's horrible. And again, the garbage you guys are going to have to, I will tell you right now, it's disgusting. And we have, I have everything from, we have baking snacks, so we have baking stuff. We have alcohol, and I have McDonald's, I have Dunkin' Donuts, I have everything. So if you guys could figure out a solution for that, that would be lovely. And the traffic, God, don't get me started. I can't even get off my driveway, there's so much traffic. So I don't know what these guys are going to encounter, but I'll tell you, it's not a lot of fun.
Hi, I actually came to speak regarding another project you're about to speak. I've lived in Bartlett.
Your name?
Agnieszka.
Okay.
But I've lived in Bartlett for 20 years. But I've lived in Marlet for 20 years, we've owned two houses, and, um, I'm very discouraged that this is the vision of the Marlet Planning Board, because, um, you know, maybe we don't want to be a shower, but it would be nice to have it downtown where you can go for a stroll from cafe to cafe, and, um, for some reason, you guys are dispersed in these restaurants all over the neighborhood. And so, if, you know, I don't know why you have the EKNT building here, and some sort of insurance agency, and some sort of offices that could be placed at a less central location, and create an actual downtown area that the citizens' partners would like to come and spend their time. And, um, I don't know why you would put a restaurant by a residential area like that. Why not keep more of those restaurants in one centralized street, you know, closer to downtown, where other restaurants are? Thank you.
Mike, Heather wants to clarify something about the right turn lane, can she come up to the podium?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the right turn lane, I think there was something, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, my concern is, will there be a right turn lane on Devon Avenue going into the area? Because that's where the bike path is, and when you think about the people on bikes, there's still many bikes there, the people on bikes cannot stop when a car is turning. There's also, because of the, like, slope of the hill and the trees there, there's actually more visibility for seeing the people on bikes and pedestrians who are coming and who are going to, it's actually even harder to see, even in the alley, um, because I'm starting to look right and left, I have to stop from the bike path potentially, as is, so for those trying to turn right into the, um, the right-in, right-out area, there's no turn lane there, and that's my concern, is there will be accidents.
And, like, if you're eastbound on a bike, going east on Devon Avenue, you might not realize there's a car approaching to turn in there, is what you're talking about?
Exactly.
I, I know what you're talking about on Hillendale, because I have gone through there, and, and it's kind of challenging to turn left to go west on Devon.
Yeah, it's already a challenge there, and we will have a lot of people trying to do that too, and also people trying to turn left, for example, families trying to get into the daycare and things like that, so even though it's a right-in, right-out, there will be, there will be people who are doing that. The other thing is, because we're forcing traffic to turn right, um, to proper, to safely come out, say that if the people who live west of the community, they will be in some force, first to turn right down to the crosswalk, okay? And then you're going into a school zone, that way the whole of the kids aren't turned left or going right and right out, which could cause traffic into the crosswalk turn lane, but primarily, this can address traffic that was, it's coming from most apartment, because most apartment is west of this development, you're going to be driving right through the whole school zone, um, and, and that's sort of the, the other thing I want to point out is that the school times are changing next year, so they will be 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so school gets out at 2:00, the majority of the kids in the neighborhood are, um, are home in the afternoons, so they are home by 2:15, 2:30, and, um, and they are, and they are around all, all day in the summer, generally too, so it's, um, it's a pretty significant amount of time every day, I mean, you can remember, we'll see kids pretty much every day, um, so it's not more of the daycare hours, unless they would, so I just wanted to point out.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any others, Kim? Do we have anyone else that's wanting to speak?
I have to make a, excuse me, I have to make a comment on this. This is being, you know, zoned for this type of business, for this type of operation, and it, it, it seems like no matter what is being offered, there's always a dislike for it. Give us some ideas of what you'd like to see, but remember, this board and the Village Board have no control over what type of business goes into a center. It's up to the business owner to develop the property, and if he's successful, fine, if he's not, he'll go out of business and something else will appear there. I think this is an opportunity to develop this property in a rather mild way. It's not anything large, it's, it's the typical small-type stores that are found along Route 59, and this property has sat idle for many, many, many years, and I think it's a, a good opportunity to develop it and get it on the tax rolls in the, in the Village Marlet, and, and offer something new and different to the community.
Anyone else? Further discussion or?
There's a four-foot, like, ornamental iron fence that will come from the daycare fence all the way around over to Prospect, so...
Four foot between the houses?
You're not gonna be picked up on the microphone, we need this in the minutes. Can you fill out a, did you fill out a sheet? We can swear you in up here. Hey, we can swear you in up here.
Sorry.
Wait a minute, raise your right hand? Because you didn't fill out a sheet, I need to swear you in. Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Sure.
Okay, give your name and address, please.
Roy Hunt, 442 Hillendale.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just curious about, it seemed like it's appropriate to separate your house.
Well, I think it's just meant to be a barrier, and then again, and, and something you could see through, and then you'll have all the landscaping on the other side of it, rather than just a, a solid wood fence that's just kinda, you know, there, and not real attractive. And I do believe that that's a change in the village ordinance, is at that point, that maybe at one time it was more of a solid wood, I don't remember exactly, Christie, but, uh...
You went through a lot of generations.
Yeah, I think when, back in 2018, 2019, when we were first looking at it, the, the ordinance required the wood fence, and now we're told they want, you know, we want to see, uh, the four-foot ornamental fence with the landscaping, uh, as a buffer, instead of just a solid wood privacy fence, so...
Would help people accept what's gonna happen with more privacy, more fence.
Well, there will be ornamental plantings too, with bushes and, and trees, is that gonna be a berm, kinda, back there?
No, it's, it's not actually a berm, like I say, it's within that landscape easement, I mean, I think it's meant to be, it's more like a barrier fence, so you don't just wander into it, and, and as the, as the plantings grow and mature, it'll fill in more, um, you know? Like I said, we've got a lot of trees and everything else. Sure, I understand.
Be more of a barrier, rather than the noise and all, it was taller, right?
Well, if it was, if it was a regular ornamental, it was taller, isn't gonna do it, what if it had to be, oops, sorry, a solid fence is what you're talking about again, right?
Taller, that's all.
Oh, mm-hmm, okay.
The six-foot fence, you mentioned earlier, is that?
The six-foot fence, vinyl solid fence is around the daycare playground.
That you're not understanding that there's, so there's a fence, and then there's an ornamental fence?
Right, the ornamental fence starts at the end of the daycare fence, it kinda goes on an angle to the property line, and then will follow the property line all around. Yeah.
Do we have the pointer?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure how to use that. That's where the si, the six-foot fence is, on the backside of the playground, and then it'd be transitions to the four-foot fence, right there, and then comes all the way around. I mean, we're open to considering an alternative, if that's what the village wants, I mean, I'm not saying it has to be that four-foot ornamental fence, I mean, I'm open to suggestion, you know, we can work, I'm willing to be flexible on that, if that would appease... Everybody.
She has a...
I already, I filled one of those things out.
Yes, come on.
Okay, yeah, so I have one question for you, so I live, like, literally three houses down from Dallas, and it was my choice, it was built there, so the garbage trucks come about 5:00 in the morning, so, so in the summertime, you can't get windows open, you know, because you have garbage trucks coming at a time. The dumpsters for the daycare, which has diapers, is three, there's those three houses down, I have McDonald's garbage, and then all the restaurants, we get all of those dumpsters, so this is gonna be right in there, how does that, well, produce?
Well, first of all, we're not talking about a McDonald's, McDonald's is probably the most intensive, uh, fast ser, quick-service restaurant there is, as far as volume and probably trash production. This would be something much smaller than that, I envision.
So, there's a lot of garbage, you know, it's a small station.
I, I'm not saying there, but...
It's still about the daycare, because if that, this is bigger than the daycare, that one's by me.
Yeah, well, I mean, their enclosure is right by the, I'm not sure what the frequency of their, their pickups is, to be honest with you, I don't think it's daily.
The residents here, the, the garbage trucks come purely, the businesses, like, at 6:00 in the morning, so, I'm, I'm just saying, because in their backyard, it's, I'm, I'm, again, I, I'm done, I mean, like, I, it's been there, there's nothing you can do where I'm at now, but we have an opportunity to not have these residents go through what we're going through, and it is quite horrible, like I said, in the summertime, you can't get windows open overnight, because you wake up at 8:00, 8:00, at about 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, so, again, if you have a chance to do it, for these guys to not get in their backyard before it's even built, so, that's all.
There is a trash receptacle?
Where's what? The trash receptacles?
Well, yeah, Brian can show you, that's where the TLE is, right there.
Okay.
And it's inside of a masonry enclosure, um, so, yeah, I, I don't know the frequency of pickups, to be honest with you, but, um, and then the other, no, the other one's up by the, uh, up by the, uh, restaurant up there, yep. In a masonry corral. So again, it's, it's not like it's right behi, it's not coming in right behind the houses, it's more up by the buildings.
Okay. Any other comments? Any further discussion or motions?
Someone?
Okay, we have, um, the ones that, I think you filled out...
No, I didn't fill out.
Go ahead, no, the other lady behind. Name again?
Right on the corner, Rebecca...
Name again?
Rebecca Hunt. Um, and I just want to emphasize again, that entrance off of Prospect Avenue, I'm really concerned about the proximity to my home, so with the garbage trucks, the semis making deliveries to the restaurant, to the daycare, at hours that are not during operating hours, um, I'm concerned about the number of pedestrians on that street, and I know you did a traffic study, I don't know how, um, that might have accounted for the number of near accidents that have happened in this stretch of street, uh, at the, at the corner of Devon and Prospect, and with, um, the amount of traffic that, that comes through there, and then adding an entrance to a parking lot in that location, um, how that will affect the flow of traffic, as well as keeping the pedestrians on that sidewalk safe, people who are from the residential areas south of us all use that, someone else also mentioned the bicycle path that is just south of us, two blocks south, and people are frequenting that bicycle path, they come up Prospect and across Devon, and they'll make an entire section out of it, if they're runners, or joggers, or walkers, or bikers, and there are families pushing strollers with babies, um, with their young children, and they go out for a morning stroll, or an afternoon stroll, and I'm really concerned, and my own children ride their bicycles up and down that sidewalk, and I'm concerned about the, the safety of having a main entrance in that location, one, being behind my home, increasing the vehicular noise that I will have, we deal with Prospect Avenue, but increasing the amount of traffic in and out as a, a main entrance, um, again, anyone missing that parking lot, having to divert into my neighborhood while my kids are playing there in that location, um, I, I do have concerns just about that, as well as, they did a lighting study that said it would not affect our backyards, did they do a lighting study that would impact our second level? My, my bedroom windows face that parking lot in the upper story, I'm not sure that you're going to be able to block the streetlights from my upstairs windows, having the parking lot directly behind my home.
Well, they would not be shining in your windows, but you would certainly see that there's light in the parking.
They would still impact my well-being in my home, we have the stoplight, and so I very well know how much those lights, and the traffic lights, the stoplight, the traffic light, the current streetlights, how much that impacts me, and then increase it with parking lights. So, those are, those are my specific concerns, I just wanted to reiterate, um, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, 220 Lito Trail?
Hi, good evening, everyone, I'm Mike Perumba, I live at 220 Lito Trail, I'm the third from Prospect, um, right back up to the fence line that we're talking about. So I've came here tonight with a very open mind, I've, I've lived here for 21 years, um, we did buy, knowing that there was a, you know, a potential for building in back of us, I came from Chicago, we're used to a lot of building around us, but honestly, um, after hearing all, everyone talk tonight, I have started to wonder about certain aspects. One thing about the, the fence you brought up, I guess I do question, many of us residents already have fences there, how is that going to look aesthetically, I guess, you know, with another four-foot fence, how is that gonna be right up against the fences that we have? Has that been considered, thought about? Hearing the traffic, um, and that the turn lanes off of Prospect and Devon give me a lot of concern, I guess, you know, with the new Aldi down the block, we have noticed, we use the, the bike path, the sidewalks, every day we walk our dog through this area, and about 12 years ago, I actually called and, and asked the building department to reassess the pedestrian walkway going to the 7-Eleven, because there were no, no, um, crosswalk things there, I actually almost got killed at that corner, like, a car came two feet from me, walking to the 7-Eleven. So, I can testify that the traffic around there is heavy, um, and the kids are running around our neighborhood, so having, um, this type of restaurant and things there will definitely increase, and I do worry about the kids in the neighborhood, um, that's a very valid thing, and the Aldi I bring up, the cross, ability to cross from Leiseburg Park to Aldi is really bad, and there's a lot of people that are using the Aldi, that's great, and congratulations to the building, you know, committee for, you know, bringing that to the village, it's been a great add, but at the same token, um, the walking that's happening is a lot, and, and crossing over Devon, it does look problematic, you have to go all the way down to the CVS, and people won't do that, they're trying to cross without proper walkways by Leiseburg Park, so that should be something that's considered when we're doing, I know we're doing a lot of building over there with the water department, so, those are my concerns, um, it does seem like, if you had one option, and you asked earlier, what would we want there, you know, I think residential really, you know, plays loud for this community, just because we have townhomes across the street, we're in our, our own residential area, there's residents across Prospect, it's a residential area, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Rouse, and I live at 838 Braintree, and I want to just keep this real short, because we have other things to move on to, but, when someone brought up the comment about these garbage trucks at commercial property, I live right behind Brewster Creek Mall, and she is, Kathy is not kidding, when we have garbage trucks out there at 4:00 in the morning... and all you hear is the beep 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 beep, and then you hear the boom. This goes on all the time. This goes on on the weekends. So I actually got ahold of somebody at the garbage company, I don't know if it's Groot now, and he gave me his private number to contact him when this is going on. But they told me that there is no village ordinance for any pickup time for commercial property. Now residential, they can't pick up before seven AM, but for commercial, there's no ordinance. And to me, that seems kind of common sense. Why wouldn't we have just a simple ordinance that these trucks cannot come into these neighborhoods, especially when you have houses right there?
Come to a village board meeting and speak at the public tom- town hall portion.
Okay.
Address the trustees.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Is that it?
When, when new developments like this are proposed, I always ask myself, which came first? The residential or the business commercial? And when you buy a home, it's, it's your responsibility to find out what the neighboring communities are zoned for. So you can't say that you, you're, you're really surprised that something was going to be developed on this lot. It's an empty lot that's zoned for business, commercial, this type of operation. And it, it's being developed in, in a reasonable fashion. I, I, I think that the, the surrounding community never seems to be happy with what's being proposed. It's always, leave it alone. It's really pretty the way it is, but things change. And this may be a time for change at property like this.
It's a lot better than the manufacturing that would have gone there years ago.
I mean, I recall a comment during the Ashton Gardens um, public hearing that it was the wrong, the wrong development for that site. So basically, we're hearing the same thing, that this development is the wrong development. I, if I recall, there were two comments who said that and said they would prefer a strip mall. So it's, you know, I understand the passion. I get that. And the developer has tried to minimize. The traffic studies show there isn't a problem. The um, parking meets the requirements, it is well over the requirements. The lighting, photometric studies have been done. I don't, I personally don't believe the liquor is an issue.
No.
Um, it's, it's a restaurant. If it was a bar, that would be, you know, completely something else. It's a restaurant. You go for dinner, you have a glass of wine. You know, there may be a, it, it's not the same as a bar. So.
And that will come again up before us.
What?
That will come before us again.
Yeah, it will come back in its final form before anything is approved, obviously. But we need something to work with.
We can't, we can't have you talking in the crowd because that doesn't hit the minutes.
So, I mean, when I have to make a decision, I feel your passion. But there's 14,000 other houses in the, in the village. Some probably looking for daycare services. Some who go out to, to dinner and would like a new restaurant in town. So I have, I have to consider the alternative. And as George said, I mean, it's been zoned this forever. And um, I ha- I believe that with the daycare and minimal retail, I like the restaurant option myself, but I also believe that the developer needs some, if he hasn't got it nailed down, but the daycare is ready to build, then to have that flexibility, because it has to come back for final approval for that part of it.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything that can be done with the playground area? Because that seems to be what we're hearing a lot of, is the playground noise. Um, is there any other, could that possibly go to the corner of the building where it would back up to the part of the retention area also? Just a thought, because.
No, not really. I mean, again, it needs to, it's two separate playgrounds, depending on ages, you know, the toddlers and young, younger children are in one area, and the, the older preschooler types are in the other playground. And it really needs to be, because it's accessed directly out to that building and it's separated. So it needs that whole length of the rear of the building to accommodate, and it's governed um, by licensing as well in terms of the size and everything else by the state.
Show us with the pointer exactly where those uh playgrounds would be.
Um, I don't think the pointer, I think it's not wor- mine's not working over here. It looks like it might have, might have died. I don't know, Brian, can you show the separation? You can see where the, there's, yeah, that's the fence that separates the two playgrounds, and they're accessed separately from the building. So you don't have the older kids, you know, interfering with the younger children, the toddlers.
So they would be coming directly out of the building and not going around.
I mean, again, this is their prototype. This is the way they operate the business. I can't just tell them. They have to figure out how to put it on the side. And then now, it compromises the integrity of the detention. And we had to upgrade the detention to meet new stormwater requirements, so um, we're getting stretched pretty thin as far as detention goes now, even though it's not a huge site. We need all that space for detention. So I don't know, we can't efficiently put it behind the building, is what I'm saying.
I envision how big that detention area is, and it is.
Well, yeah, it's, it's over an acre in size.
Between where those garbage trucks are going to come in is acre.
Right, separation, yes.
And that's maybe a little different from the other scenario we've been hearing about off of Route 59.
Yeah, if you have buildings backing up to residents and they're, and the trash is behind them like it is typically, yeah, they have to go right up against that.
Just keep it down.
So the, the trash pickup will definitely be in that corner where you showed.
Yeah, up in the front there, yes. Right off the corner of the building.
I, I think the six-foot fence around the play area will help block the noise.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a solid fence, privacy fence, so it's, it's got some sound uh benefits too.
Twenty-five years ago, that was a corn, cornfield when I moved here, and it stayed that way for quite a while.
Yeah.
I like the daycare. I live across from my elementary school, and during COVID, it was haunting that there was no noise, nobody laughing, running around. So, I'm sorry, but to me, a, a group of, I'm an elementary education major too. So for me, having children laughing and playing is a, is a nice thing. So uh, I like the daycare. Um, I don't know if there's been any other proposals for this area. I'm big on the restaurant. I think we have enough restaurants that we don't pro- promote them enough. And uh, I know my friends that own and run the restaurants are very frustrated right now, because there seems to be a lack of interest in Bartlett restaurants. They want to go to Schaumburg, they want to go to Bloomingdale, somewhere else, and we need to start promoting Bartlett restaurants. So if I had to vote, I'd vote for the uh, daycare and uh, let the uh, the other proposals sit and see what happens. Thank you.
Well, we could take separate motions. We could vote on them separately, but the uh, the restaurant's only a preliminary.
Mm-hmm.
You have a question?
Yes. Name and address again.
Brian Hunt, two two eight Lido Trail. Um, you know, to, to be fair, you know, what could go there? Um, you know, something, of course, that would not decrease property values, would not cause um, extra disruption, that wouldn't be, you know, operating at hours that are going to be disruptive to the families. Maybe a dentist's office, a doctor's office.
And those are very real possibilities for the other retail plan.
But that's not what's being proposed.
No, I, yeah, I mean, there's plenty of other retail space in there. I envision it being a lot of service-oriented retail, not, it has to be like e-commerce proof retail.
For, you know, for, maybe, maybe a lawyer wants to open an office there.
Exactly.
I'm an accountant. Maybe I'd want to open an office there, you know?
Let's talk.
Something, something that's peaceful.
Yeah.
Or the, for, you know, think about it. You're moving in there, you're going to buy a two two eight Lido Trail, okay? Which when we bought, there was a big field in the back, and we knew that. And I put a nice white fence across the back of our property. I, I separated us from the field that my kids were playing in at the time, because I knew this day might come. But my hope and my understanding was that um, that when the day came, what was put there would be something that wouldn't damage the value of our house. Okay? Now, if I look in the backyard and I have a convenience store, or I look in the backyard and I have a um, a, a, a restaurant, we'll call it a restaurant. I mean, we've called it a bar, um, it's going to serve alcohol, there's noise. Uh, you know, we hear music from across down the way by Aldi because of, you know, there's restaurants down there and they play music. We hear that all the way where we live, so we don't want that in our backyard. So I, when I stand in my bedroom and I look out, I do see the light at the corner there. So, so, so something that's going to help quiet that area and bring value to it, that if someone came and looked at their house and they says, oh, well, there's a, there's a doctor's office in the backyard, you know? Nice building, clean, good, some good landscaping, a little barrier, you know, so that, you know? But instead, what we got, we got a road 20 feet from our backyard. Uh, we got parking spaces right in our backyard. Uh, you know, a lot of people have mentioned the um, the garbage, you know, and, and where were those? If those garbage cans are located in the middle, that, that dump, that garbage truck is still coming through there to get to them, to them. So, so, and I think the theme that everyone has said, you know, whether it's prac- you know, some people have said, hey, maybe we should rezonate residential. Maybe, that might not be a bad idea. But if that's not an option that the, the village is willing to entertain, then it needs to be something that's going to be quiet and peaceful, um, that on the weekends, they're not there, or maybe they're there for a little bit in the morning, you know, some doctors take some appointments there in the morning. But it's going to be a quiet place. That's what, I think that's what everyone's looking for.
And I think there's a high likelihood that under the retail plan, it's going to be a lot of service-oriented retail.
But that's not what's being proposed right now. So I think I, did, did I not hear a convenience store was an option?
No, I didn't, I didn't say.
Okay, so no convenience store?
I, I have.
A restaurant?
Provision for one potential quick service restaurant. The rest of the retail could be anything. I did a Starbucks with a pediatric dentist in Naperville.
Yeah.
Out, out on Route 59. I mean, it's a great co-tenant type use, so.
I mean.
I mean, I could see something similar here.
You're, if, the, the problem with the, the drive-through, drive-throughs you will hear all the time. You know, I like my latte, whatever it is that they're ordering, you know? You're going to hear that from the backyard.
I don't know if you can, right, when it's up against Devon. We have it all oriented towards Devon and facing that direction, so, behind the building.
Maybe you guys can do a sound study on that. So we just like it to be something quiet and peaceful. The concerns with the daycare are the same. They want quiet and peaceful. I agree. Children are nice to hear. You know, I think the community wants to, the, the community around there wants to work with the village. We understand. Honestly, to have something developed there that didn't hurt our home value would be a burden off of me.
I don't think it's going to hurt your home value. I really don't. We only do.
Can you show studies that show that? Because I guarantee you it will. If there are lights behind my house, and are the restaurants allowed to have lights? What color lights are they allowed to have? Are they allowed to have red lights? Like, is there, is there the signs? What color lights are they allowed to have?
They have to comply with the signage ordinances of the village.
I, I mean, because, because if I look out my back window and I'm seeing a bright uh, green Starbucks sign, or a Chipotle sign, or some whatever, I mean, these are things that the community wants. And, and the other thing about these, um, the restaurant and, and everything you have located here, they're actually facing our homes. So I, I do appreciate that you've pushed it all the way out to Devon Avenue, uh, but they're, they're facing, they're facing parts and the parking lots are.
Better elevation than, than usually the rear of a building. You don't want to look at the rear of a building, do you?
I like quiet. I like peaceful. I like a protective barrier in between there. I like trees and stuff that's going to make us not see it.
Conventional planning and staff can show you, I mean, the downtown ordinance wants buildings up on the street. That's where uh, you know, businesses want to be. They want visible exposure from the streets, and they don't want big parking lots in front of them.
So, so I think.
Set back from the road.
I think where we're going is maybe these aren't the right buildings for right here. So.
Or you don't even know what the building looks like yet.
Because, because once it's developed, then we don't have to worry about our property's values crashing, because someone went and said, hey, let's get a liquor license and put something behind our house. I know that's sensitive to you, but it is a liquor, it is a place that sells liquor. So we're looking for something, I mean, come back to us with a proposal that is not going to hurt our home values, that we can joyously say, yeah, great, these guys are doing a good by us.
Okay, I think it's time to consider the proposal that's here.
Uh, so I object to both.
Well, and Ashton Gardens would have been great. I'm cutting it off. Cutting off. Let's go with the motion. No. Motion. Let's go with a motion.
I make a motion to approve the uh, what is it, twenty-five oh five? The ordinance to uh, create the uh, uh, B3 zoning with a PUD with the uh, two-unit res- commercial and the daycare center.
And there's also special use permits for the restaurant.
And special use permit for the restaurant, for the drive-through.
Were we going to do that one separate, the special use? I think Charlie was wanting it separate.
Yes.
Okay, so we can do a separate motion for the special use on the restaurant.
What are we trying to do? Is it a separate motion?
You want a, a separate motion? I made the motion for the whole thing.
Okay.
Go with the whole thing.
I think it should be the whole thing.
Okay.
The restaurant and all the businesses.
You have to include the special uses.
Surround that.
It includes restaurants and includes the other retail unit and the daycare.
Okay, at this point, we close the public hearing. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Bob. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
John Bannerman.
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe.
No.
George Colzeal.
Yes.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Julie Kapodakakis. Amy McWayne.
Yes.
Mike Worden.
Yes.
Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Does anybody need a break, or should we continue?
Yes.
Okay, take a five-minute recess.
We're waiting for them to leave.
Good, George, good.
No, I will not.
We're going to lose half the room here.
Yes.
Because it's, you can't hear the tape. Charlie's comment about the children, what she heard noises. Go by the findings of fact, or was presented, so.
Yes, it did.
You go, no, it goes to the village. This is a public.
This is a public.
Really don't have. Yeah, I would prefer so. Because they want something that has a weight on it. Because there's pushback from this community every time something was in that lot, that was zoned for a commercial. I can't help but think more, knowing that there was a commercial right there, and think that they had the right to come in. They wanted to stay in the lot. The comment about the people on the bike pit, it's a rider's responsibility. If you're not here for the next hearing, please leave. It's different, for sure.
The next item on the agenda is case number twenty-five dash oh four, Starbucks, eight oh one, South Route fifty-nine. Are the petitioners present?
Yes.
Please come up to the microphone.
Please, Starbucks.
Raise your right hand, do you solemnly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper, and the sign?
Yes.
Mark those exhibits A, B, and C, go ahead and state your name and add.
I beg the difference about the sign, I walked by there yesterday, there was no sign.
There was three signs on the property.
There weren't any signs on the property.
There weren't Thursday night?
They weren't there Thursday noon.
They were there when I drove by today.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I don't know what happened. I, I walked, I walked there Thursday, or Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday at noon.
Yes.
And there were no signs around the area.
They're on the overall property, so there was one on the road and one on the stairs by the Walgreens drive-through, or not.
Oh, okay, I, I apologize.
The one by Walgreens.
I apologize, I didn't see this, my apologies.
Okay, go ahead and state your name and address.
My name is Marty.
This is the address.
My name is Marty Attia, representing Starbucks, address for development is eight oh one dash eight oh three South Route fifty-nine in Bartlett. So I'm here to give you a brief introduction of our plans over there for the development of a dispensary at the eight oh one South Route fifty-nine. Our name is Starbucks, we are a company that have operated throughout the country since twenty-ten. We're here pretty much to address concerns that we have heard from residents of Bartlett, and to talk about more of community engagement and how we can address these concerns. Oh, do we have? Is this one, there we go. So, first of all, I want to give you.
My nerves aren't working?
No, we're good. First of all, we've been operational since twenty-ten throughout the country. We are a family-owned company, and in Illinois, we've come into Illinois in twenty-twenty-two. This would be our fifth location, developing here in Illinois. Primarily, we initially focus on every location in education. When I say education, when people walk in, we try to educate all our customers and our surrounding residents of what we do and what exactly about the product. Our, our team that we've developed over the past fifteen years, bring a great amount of expertise into this industry, more than just selling cannabis, we bring product information, effects, things that people have concerns about. So that's primarily what we try to focus on when we initiate our first interaction with any customer in any new dispensary and ongoing. Right now, this would be our fifth location. Our first location was in Burbank, Westmont, then Hoffman Estates and Riverside. All four locations, we've been operational since twenty-twenty-two, our first location, and we've been nothing but exceptional tenants in the, in the towns, and we've done a lot of great work with cities and the towns. For example, here in Huff, Rockford, the average median income is thirty-one thousand dollars. We pride ourselves that our average employee makes forty-three thousand dollars. So these are the little things that we bring into the town, we bring employment, we bring extra, the, the average income of our employees is a lot greater than the surrounding areas. We hear that the primary concern is the children, access to cannabis. In the many years that we've done this, there were some concerns that could product be dropped outside, can children get a hold of this product if, you know, they're walking around the area? One, I assure everybody, in the past fifteen years, we haven't had an incident that a child was able to get a product from any of our dispensaries intentionally or unintentionally on the property. And then, we are guided by, regulated by the state for each package to be child safety, and when I tell you that some of these packages, I have a difficulty time opening, it's, you know, very difficult. We do require our staff and our security to randomly, within the hour, couple times an hour, to walk the facility, walk outside, check the parking lot, just to make sure everything is good. Our average customers shop online, seventy percent come from shopping online, so pretty much, they come in, they get their product, and they walk out. It's not chaotic, it's not these lines that we've witnessed early days of cannabis, this traffic congestion, those days are long gone. It's pretty much a normal interaction, they walk in, five minutes, they're walking out, very discreet, discreet packaging, outside our stores, you can't even tell we're a cannabis company, there's no leaf advertising that we're a cannabis company, our sign is out there, that's the best we have, is saying Starbucks. There is concern about the daycare facility that is, I believe, on the left and the right of us down the way. Again, it, it's, it's something that we don't take lightly, we, we, you know, I have five children myself, and, you know, if, if there's any concerns, we always like to address those concerns. One big thing that I always tell people is that people walk into our dispensary and walk out, and you can't even tell they have anything. People don't just randomly open up cannabis and, you know, start smoking on sight, it doesn't happen. We, in the three years we were operational here in Illinois, of our four locations, we have not had one nine-one-one call regarding anything, whether it's a consumption outside, or cannabis being found, or of a crime, or of a rough customer, any of that. So we take pride in that, we take pride in the fact that our locations are safe, secure, and very discreet, and our transactions are very discreet, and our customers, they enjoy that discretion. So if there's also any concerns, we always like to, you know, address concerns with neighboring businesses, and we try to work with neighboring businesses any way we can, if it's in our means, to address any possible concerns. Again, the packaging is child-resistant, tamper-proof, it's, we brought some samples in case anybody wants to see some. We, we're not catering to children, we don't have cartoonish figures, we don't have, you know, all this colorful stuff, you, you don't see any of that outside of our dispensaries. And inside our dispensaries, none of our packaging caters to children, it's regulated by the state, and it's one of the hardest regulation in the country, actually. The labeling is labeled several times when you buy the product outside, the packaging, we seal it in a non, in a discreet bag, so when they're walking out, it's a small, black discreet bag or a white bag, so pretty much, nobody knows what's in that particular bag. We, we, we do follow all state and city regulations. Illinois is the toughest regulated state in the country. There's only two hundred and forty dispense, forty-seven dispensaries in all of Illinois, opposed to Colorado has over a thousand. So it, it, you know, Illinois does regulate every dispensary and holds them to the highest It's not working here. So onsite consumption, I can't vouch for what individuals will do, but I only could tell you from past experiences in Illinois and other states is that we have not had any incidents that people actually left our facility, opened up a package, and consumed a product on the property. If, if we were to witness that, there's a bunch of guidelines that we'd have to follow and report to the state, we have not had one incident. More than likely, people like to take their product, go home for a later time and consume. It's not like alcohol, you know, alcohol is, you know, we, I come from the liquor industry many years ago, people walk out the liquor store, they're cracking their bottle, and they're drinking as they're walking in parks, it's not, this is different, people take their product and go home. We have onsite monitoring, twenty-four-seven, the state has access to all the cameras at any time. Also, on top of the twenty-four-seven monitoring, while we're operational, we have security at all times, which walks the outside of the premises every hour, every, twice an hour, and checks surroundings, and also checks the parking lot, checks any trash bins, things like that, that could possibly find discarded product. And, believe it or not, they actually clean the, they clean the parking lot if they happen to see a trash, so, trash in our, in our facilities is pretty good, nonexistent, we have a strong team, we, we really take pride in where we go, and, and how we visually look, because we know that we're scrutinized the most, and we really take pride in our locations and our businesses, inside and outside. Our traffic, our, our staff is well-trained, foremost, we, we offer a one-week course in product training and information, so this way that everybody understands that they're not just selling cannabis, that they could also interact with the customer and answer all the questions regarding that effect, or what in particular they're looking for. We always try to go to locations that have ample parking, because early on, parking was an issue, which brought concerns and safety. With this particular development, it has ample parking, more than we could possibly use, so we don't see any problems. And with regarding signage, our signage is just a simple Starbucks, and we will abide by any local signage ordinance that is given to us. Another thing we do pride ourselves is community engagement. For example, we always like to go into any community we go into and work with the city in how we could help. Rockford is one thing that we've developed and helped with Domestic Abuse Center, we are sponsors from, with a Domestic Abuse Center that they built out about three, four years ago, and we're big sponsors with that, and we really take pride in that. So again, public safety, twenty-four-seven monitoring, that is also monitored by state police, always we have onsite security, and we check IDs several times. In order to walk into the facility, you have to be twenty-one, you can't even bring a child with you, anybody under twenty-one cannot enter the facility, even if they're with somebody that's older than twenty-one, they would have to stay in the car. It's absolutely nobody inside the facility that's under twenty-one, and that's just to get the first step, that would be a corridor lobby area, their ID is checked, and it's not checked manually, it's checked through a system that just reads that their age, it doesn't store any information, it tells us that they have a valid state ID, and that they are twenty-one. Then they're led into the dispensary floor, at which time, they will be dealt with, with a bartender, and they will check their ID again prior to the transaction, and then, once they get their product, will be the last time to check ID. So, pretty much, they could be get checked three times when they walk into that dispensary, and it's become a norm. We go the extra step in checking one last time to make sure that the person is who they say they are, and that there, no, nobody missed a step along the way. So, I really want to really address, you know, again, the, the, the safety. Safety is primarily for us, number one, first and foremost, before anything, you know, we do not compromise safety, children in particular. Again, the fact that I have five children, I always say to myself, do I want my children present today? How can I prevent my children? It's all about children, and the, the procedures we put in place, if, far proceeds that we stop anybody that goes from twenty-one going into the operation, we communicate, we communicate this to our staff, the product that comes in, from all cultivation, we make sure that there's tamper seals, and then we make sure that the, every product package is child safety, even though they're regulated by the state, to make sure that all their product is child-safe and tamper-proof, we still do random checks as products come in to make sure that nothing gets missed. And like I said, we, we do invest into the community. One of my favorite projects is a domestic shelter in Rockford, that I'm very proud of and very active with. And again, we, we're willing to adapt, we'd like to hear any concerns, we'd like to address any business concerns or residential concerns, anything that we could do that's in our powers, we always try to work within the community and not against. At this time, I conclude my presentation, and if there's any questions I could answer, feel free to answer.
Staff recommends approval of the petitioner's quest for a special use permit subject to the conditions and findings of fact.
I have a couple questions regarding the, the monitoring. So you have a camera system that the state can look at?
Correct.
Is that also available for the village to look at?
I do not believe the state allows access to the village.
Okay, that's a state thing?
That's a state thing.
Okay.
State police has access.
Are there cameras outside monitoring the parking lot?
Correct. So, with state regulation, outside, external, and internal has to be monitored, also, we have to have cameras that monitor license plates that customers come in, to make sure that license plates are read, so there, there's several cameras that are placed outside that look like it's an overkill, but it's regulated by the state. And actually, we even have cameras on the roofs.
So security that's on-premise, when somebody leaves with the product, could monitor them as they're leaving from inside the store?
Correct, yes, we have live monitoring inside the store also.
Okay, and, I mean, obviously, that's all controlled by the state, and?
State and the dispensaries.
Okay. I realize that the bakery at eight oh three is not special use, and is not part of this hearing.
Correct.
But looking at the floor plan, I had difficulty visualizing. But looking at the floor plan, I had difficulty visualizing if it's 803 and the bakery completely separate from the dispensary?
It is. It just has like any shared use in a strip mall, shared wall, different entrances.
So there's no commonality?
There's no commonality. The state will not allow us that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the baking going to be done on property?
Initially, it might not be done, but ultimately, yes, we would like baking on
Anyone else?
Yeah, you mentioned that you don't think that it will generate minimal traffic. And I understand that the parking is not the issue. I would highly disagree. The roads on both sides of this intersection, or 59 and Stearns, have horrible traffic problems. Could we address this in some manner? That intersection is not very safe, so adding more traffic into that development could cause some serious problems.
No, most definitely. Going through that particular area, because there's several entrances and exits out of there, we feel that the traffic congestion will be divided up. On average, we get about 35 cars an hour, maybe?
Right.
Thirty cars an hour, 35 cars an hour. Yeah, it's divided up between five different ins and outs or four different ins and outs.
Is the state still talking about putting a traffic signal in at Norwood and 59?
There has not been any recent discussion on that.
Anyone else? At this point, we can open it up to the public, make sure that you fill out one of those sheets so that we don't have to swear you in. We also intend, if we're not through by 10 o'clock, we'll have a continuance to another night. Let's try to make sure that we don't get repetitive. Don't be talking in the audience because then they can't hear the minutes when they try to get them transcribed. Go ahead, Kim.
My name is Carol Harrington and I live at 757 Braintree Lane. I'm right behind where this dispensary is supposed to be. I've lived at that address for 29 years and previously, I lived on Hyacinth Lane for nine years, so I've been in Bartlett for 38 years. Love this town, absolutely love it. That's why I moved from one house to another. I'm not debating about the fact that buying and using cannabis is legal. That's not my issue. I'm concerned about the safety and the health and the welfare of our community, especially our youngest and most vulnerable. Again, we're talking about location. You are aware that you are being placed within, we are within walking distance. There are dozens of homes within walking distance and then two daycares right near where you want to put this dispensary. Studies show that presence of dispensaries in close proximity to neighborhoods can lead to increased exposure and normalization of drug use among minors. I'm not talking adults. Children are incredibly impressionable and seeing a cannabis store and bakery right there near their daycares, I think sends the wrong message to that drugs, using drugs is a normal, everyday part of life. Again, I'm not talking adults, I'm talking children. I'm a mom, a grandma, and a retired school teacher. I don't think this is how we want to raise our children. Second, the public, real public safety concerns, traffic. I live right at the T of Braintree in Norwood and as you all know, there's a lot of traffic there. As Kathy had said, we are picking up garbage all the time from McDonald's. Okay, there's a strip mall there. I knew the strip mall was there when I moved there. I have no issue with the strip mall whatsoever. I think we need to have a strip mall, a family-oriented strip mall. I'm concerned about the use of, or the odor in marketing. If you are baking and there's odor from this cannabis going through the neighborhood, I don't think that's very desirable. We can smell McDonald's, okay? We can smell Silver Lake, that's fine. We can smell Dunkin' Donuts, smells great. But I don't think that our kids should be smelling cannabis where they're outside playing in a daycare playground. And we have two playgrounds there. I hope that you will consider what the community wants. I don't think we should be telling families that live here and those may be considering moving here, that their concerns come second to business concerns. I believe that this dispensary will hurt the value of our homes. I think it will make people think twice. Do I want to live right in an area where there's a cannabis dispensary? We could have this dispensary on Stearns in that industrial area. There are no homes there. We could have this dispensary at the CVS that just closed down. There are no homes right there. So we're not saying, don't have a dispensary in Bartlett. What we are saying is, not there. We had in that area, physical therapy, florists, dentists, karate, hair salons. Awesome, great. We want businesses in that area. We want family businesses in that area. But cannabis is strictly adult and we have a lot of children in our neighborhoods. I would recommend or ask strongly that we keep the zoning the way it is, that we not rezone to allow somebody there that we really didn't want to have there in the first place because we have our zoning the way it is right now. Traffic, again, traffic is going to be brutal because it's already very busy. But we, again, we knew that when we moved in. But with cannabis there, I think we're really going to make traffic worse. So that's my concern. I hope you will consider the residents that have been there. Like I said, I've been in this community for 38 years. I love Bartlett, but I don't love this idea. Thanks.
Thank you.
Vera Tate?
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to really strongly oppose the proposal of locating...
Give your name and address.
I'm sorry, Vera Tate. I live at 740 Duxbury Lane and have lived there for 20 years. I'm rising to speak in opposition to having the dispensary where it's being proposed. I'm a pediatric neurologist and I'm, three years ago, I retired as the chief medical officer of the American Academy of Pediatrics here. And I will tell you, I totally agree with what was said before, so I won't repeat that. I'm certain that no one here, I'm so certain that no one here would ever want to hurt a child. So let's just say that. No one would ever want to hurt a child intentionally. But one thing that you said, which really hit home to me, is you don't really have any control. You have the, you know, the videos and you have the people there, but you said yourself, we don't have control when someone leaves, when someone buys it and when someone leaves, even though you have the security. So let me tell you one particular problem that you may not have really thought about and that's in this location, right next to the childcare facility. What we heard is that you have never, thankfully, ever had someone pick up an edible, you know, someone drop it or pick it up or any... You know, you're implying that a child would, that would never happen, right? That a child wouldn't. Let me tell you one quick review article that was published in Pediatrics in 2023. The study looked at cannabis edible ingestions, unintentional, unintentional, in children less than six years of age. The years of the study were from 2017 to 2017 to 2021 and it looked at medical outcomes and, you know, all of that. During 2017 to 2021, there were 7,043 exposures of children less than six to cannabis edibles and otherwise, 7,000 nationally. In 2017, there were 207 reported cases. So that's an increase of 1,375% with what's happening throughout the countries, right? Though these numbers are remarkable, all it takes is one child, right? I can tell you all those numbers. I can tell you the research. I can, as a neurologist, I can tell you what happens to a child who eats an edible or what might happen to a child. Admittedly, most of these ingestions were from home ingestions. So I will give you that and you're doing all the good things. You're trying to do the right things, so I'm grateful. But not all of them were. There are many other areas that it happened in too. And we continue, from the American Academy of Pediatrics, we continue to really look at the strategies that you named, that you actually named, which is not naming things like pot tarts, you know, and not having, which is what we see, and not having the packaging that looks like candy. And so I'm very grateful that you're doing that. However, why take the chance on a dropped edible being found and eaten by a child? Why would you take that chance? All you know, all you need to know is if you have a grandchild or a child that's two years old, think how fast they are at getting to something on the ground or on the floor and you're trying to get it back from them before. What'd they do with it? They put it right in their mouth, right? Right in their mouth. And so I think that I'm asking you to please consider the possibility of what can happen to a child, even with all the good things that you're trying to do. So I would ask that you would consider putting it somewhere else. Again, we're way past legal, whatever, and I could stand here tonight and tell you what happens to a child's developing brain when they're older or when they're younger and they're on pot, I'm just saying, on that. So please consider that and think that you would never want to have one child hurt. And to have two places like that is really hard. And I am, I'm really concerned too with the traffic. If you're looking at 35 an hour, 35 more vehicles an hour and you're coming back and forth, you do have, I'm from there and I go there and so I know the ways to come in and out. But I tell you, where you really get, what I see the most traffic is right there at McDonald's and childcare and in that kind of coming together. So thank you for all you do. Thank you for considering this and thank you for really caring about the children.
I have a question. So the studies, the edibles that you're talking about, is that cannabis infused with THC?
Yes, I mean, we can talk about what your edibles are like, but in general, when we say edibles, it's like candy infused with THC, right?
Okay, well, this, why don't you address that so that it's clear?
Okay, were we talking about now the dispensary? Were we talking about the dispensary bakery?
Bakery side of it.
What's in the edible?
The bakery side is not cannabis THC. It's actually hemp, totally different product, totally different thing, little to no psychedelic effect.
So you don't sell any edibles that have THC in them?
No, they're talking about, the bakery? No, the dispensary?
Dispensary.
Yes, now the dispensary, there is edibles in the dispensary that is prepackaged from the facility, the grow facility, may or have you. But there is edibles in every dispensary.
And it has THC?
It has THC, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kayla Scardamaglia and I am actually the center director of this childcare we keep talking about. So I want to give you guys a face to kind of go with this big looming childcare center. I currently house 120 children in my center and 115 on a daily basis. I've asked my parents, how do you feel about this? Because this is your community. Quite a few of my parents are not thrilled with the thought of having a dispensary and a bakery so close to their children. Because yes, things can get dropped, we understand that. I clean liquor bottles up from the liquor store that's a little bit further down. My concern is when the bakery comes and I have immunocompromised children that have the asthma and the smoke and everything that is coming through that air that we already have to be cautionable about. We check the UV, we check the air quality, we keep eyes on that because these are our most precious little people. The next thing is that traffic. I am so petrified when my kiddos get off the bus, just from normal traffic of McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts. And when you're telling me 35 cars an hour, I on average have four yellow buses that drop off every day, not including the six bus runs my two buses do. And that's not including the pickup and drop off time of those little kids running out to their cars. We have so much parent traffic that our parents park on the median by the McDonald's and walk across because sometimes there's just not enough parking. And with all of this increased traffic, that just runs the risk of one of my little people or a parent getting hit and that scares the ever-living daylights out of me. So I'm just asking, not there, not two doors down from my little people. There's across by McMase, there is by Bannerman's, there are so many other options than two doors down. Thank you.
Donnell Gary Burton?
I've had the clap.
Good evening. My name is Donnell Gary Burton and I live at 1028 Norwood Lane in Bartlett. And I am very happy to be here this evening to speak with you and I'm hoping that you will hear the voices of our residents. In my hand, I have a petition that has been signed by over 100 residents that live in the area of Bartlett Estates, opposing the rezoning of the B3 shopping area that we live next to. Can I present that to someone or what do you do with this?
Take that. There was also a letter, I didn't realize, that should be exhibit D and this was a letter from Richard Lewis and then we could have hers as exhibit E. Yes.
And then I also have other exhibits, I think, that go through the alphabet as well, that both speak to zoning practices of other areas in DuPage County that currently have cannabis dispensaries. But I'm going to keep it brief because I know that we need to be out by 10. Can I hand that to you?
Yes, please. We can take a look at it.
And then I'd like to speak. I'm here on behalf of over 100 Bartlett residents who have signed a petition opposing the rezoning to allow a cannabis dispensary in the B3 neighborhood shopping center located less than 250 feet from a daycare facility in a residential neighborhood. This proposal puts our community in uncharted and unsafe territory. To date, no other, no other municipality in DuPage County has permitted an adult-use cannabis dispensary this close to a daycare center or residential homes for that matter. It's not a coincidence, though. It's a reflection of deliberate, responsible zoning decisions that prioritize public safety and family welfare. Under the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, municipalities are granted the authority to restrict the location of dispensaries particularly near what the law defines as sensitive uses, like schools and childcare centers. like schools and childcare centers. In addition, the Illinois Municipal Code 65 ILC 5-11-13-1 gives villages of Bartlett a clear responsibility to regulate land use and to protect the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. This includes keeping incompatible uses like a cannabis dispensary and a daycare center apart. The B3 Neighborhood Shopping District was not designed for this type of high security, high traffic, commercial operation. It was intended to support local, low impact businesses that serve the day to day needs of residents. Placing a cannabis dispensary in this setting brings potential security concerns, increased vehicle traffic, as was mentioned, 35 cars an hour, and a fundamental shift in the character of this neighborhood. Let me be clear, this is not about opposing, opposition to legalized cannabis. This is about location. And this location simply is inappropriate. A dispensary does not belong next to where children are being cared for, where families live, walk, and play. There are better suited commercial areas in Bartlett, including C4 and industrial districts that are properly buffered from homes and childcare centers and more aligned with the nature of cannabis retail. Approving this rezoning would not only contradict Bartlett's own thoughtful planning practices, it would break trust with families who live, work, and raise their children here. We urge you to stand with our residents and uphold the zoning protections that have kept our neighborhood safe and our community strong. Please deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
My name is Jim Pantos, I live at 1065 Auburn Lane. I'm coming up on my 30th anniversary here in Bartlett. So it's been a great experience so far, but I'm really disappointed what I'm hearing today. Just so you know, the Chicago ordinance for cannabis says that you can't have a cannabis dispensary within 500 feet of a school. That's a common area in that area, that parking lot. There's no real defining spot for what the property line is for that daycare center. And I know that lady did an excellent job, but it's got to be less than 250 feet. It's got to be less than 250 feet. And the, I mean, just how important this is, is the Medical Cannabis Program Act, which this is just not a dispensary, it's a bakery too, is 2,500 feet. And I really believe that this village, and Charlie, by the way, I like you because you were involved with kids, stay there. I feel like this commission here, some of you are just going to be us people, and I understand that there's a balanced way with progress and development. You have an awful lot of open land. You have right across the street, 227, empty. Put them there. The police are right across the street. Anything happens, you're right there. Why do you have to put it right next to, why do you have to put it next to where you have 120 kids, and he's already told you? I'm going to call his presentation a slick presentation. No meat to it. Just, he tells you he's a community person. He's not there for the community, he's there to make money. You know it, we all know it. But you have the location right across the street or other areas that aren't affected by young kids. Please don't do this morally. I haven't been lucky enough to have my own children. I'm an empty duster. But you probably all have children. Please don't do this. I'm not here because I have children. I'm here because I think morally, and I've never been here before, but this morally is wrong. That's all I have to say.
Good evening, I'm Jim Harrington, I live at 757 Braintree Lane in Bartlett. I've been in education for 40 years, and school gets out in another month. And all these kids do in the summertime is ride their bikes around with their friends, and they go to McDonald's, and they go to Baskin and Robbins, and they go to Walgreens, and traffic is terrible over there. They're on their skateboards going around. Before you know it, these kids are going to be running in, and then we have the daycare there, and they're going to be asking these four, five, and six year old kids, mommy and daddy, what's Starbucks? They don't need that exposure at that age, they don't need anything like that at that age. They're too young, they're going to experience enough when they get to junior high and high school. Think about the parking situation. If you go out right now on Norwood and try to make a left hand turn on Route 59 by McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts there, it's nearly impossible. Think about where they're going to go. Try to make a left when you go south out to Stern's by the Walgreens. Try to make a left hand turn there, you can't do that either. Where are these cars going to go? These cars are going to come down Norwood, and they're going to go down Braintree in both directions, 30 to 35 cars an hour. Half of Braintree does not have sidewalks. People walk in the streets. There's no 25 mile an hour speed limit down that road. They're flying through that area. Take a look at the bus stop in the morning right now. What's going to happen with these people that are going to be coming from dispensary? They don't really care what's going on there. We don't have sidewalks on half of Braintree. So where are these people going to walk? In the neighborhood now, they walk on the streets. Last but not least, Streamwood has a dispensary at the Steak and Shake. It's a building all by itself. Randall Road in Elgin, Boston Market, just became a dispensary all by itself. We don't need it in the subdivision when houses are less than 200 yards away from this place, and the poor daycares on both ends are even closer than that. Why not Brewster Creek? Send it out west, I know Bartlett wants the money, that's fine. Send it out west on Stern's, Brewster Creek, Industrial Park. That's where Bannerman's was going to go, why not send a dispensary there too? Thank you.
Frank Forenstein?
Hi, I'm Frank Forenstein, I live at 828 Braintree Lane, I don't remember that. Yeah, I've been, I built my house in 1986 there. I knew that there was going to be a shopping mall there. There was supposed to be a berm with, and cul-de-sac on Norwood. When the strip mall came in, it was supposed to be, their service road was supposed to be 20 or 30 feet from my property line. Well, they took out the berm and they moved it 10 feet from my property line. You got rid of the cul-de-sac because he wanted the traffic. All right, then you guys changed the zoning on that strip mall to get the McDonald's in there, which I can understand. But all of this has added a lot of traffic in my neighborhood. A lot of trash, but a lot of people stopping in front of my house to either eat their McDonald's or do whatever they want to do. But I mean, you're going to tell me, and I don't even know, what are the hours of your store?
Usually around nine to nine, or nine to 10.
Nine, okay, but I have people stopping in front of my house to do whatever, either, you know, and that's fine, you know, because they're allowed to be parked on, I think. TL Aaron's ended up putting sidewalks in our area. We're, I know our area, I think, is the only area in Bartlett that doesn't have sidewalks. But she put sidewalks in because she was concerned about the traffic. And he's going to bring in a lot more traffic. And believe me, everybody knows that they don't want to make a left onto 59, and they don't want to try to make a left hand turn on the Sterns over by the daycare center. They want to make a left on Braintree, or they'll even go around the pond to make a left farther out. But you know, I am concerned about that, that's my biggest concern. I, yeah, I understand what, but if you're giving him an extra, you know, a special zoning to come into my neighborhood again, I don't understand that. Okay, thank you.
Agni Januski, 809 Kingston Lane. We've lived in that neighborhood for 10 years now. We have an 18-year-old who grew up there. And we have a middle school age boy who has some friends, and they like to bike around the neighborhood and walk to McDonald's and walk to Dunkin' Donuts. And my concern is that having that pond there, it's a beautiful area. A lot of people come to fish there or to go for a walk. There's some benches there, there's, you know, like a gazebo with tables. Some people who will come and buy your product, they might go and enjoy it in this beautiful, natural area. And we have our kids spending their free time there. So you know, there's nothing to stop your customers from going and using those products there. I don't know if you envision Bartlett Police canvassing that area? And you know, how fast does Illinois State Police respond to these areas where cannabis shops are? So those are big concerns of mine. From what I understand, there's also a pathway or a bikeway coming from Bartlett downtown area to Auburn Lane. So that's going to open up a lot more foot and bike traffic. And all those people will go to the pond and to McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts and possibly the cannabis shop. And we just don't think it's right to put it so close to the residential area. Thank you.
Hi again, Kathy Jakum, 1015 Norwood Lane. Everybody has said everything just so wonderfully. I live literally three houses down from the daycare. And the 35 cars, I was thinking five, so the fact that that's seven times more than I could even imagine. Again, I can't even get off my driveway. They reroute traffic when there's accidents. It comes down our subdivision from Braintree to Norwood. All of us know not to make a left onto 59 from Norwood Lane, but people don't know that, getting out of McDonald's cannabis store, they're not going to know that. That's going to be causing more accidents. There was just an accident there just a couple weeks ago from that. Not from you, but from going out that way. Kids, I have a 23 and 20-year-old, their biggest joy was when they were, gosh, maybe I let them, when they were 10 and 12, they could go to McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts all by themselves. You know, I know you can't control the people, but somebody, you know, wants to offer somebody something, you're going to have these poor innocent children, not even just the daycare, but our kids that live in our neighborhood. There's, gosh, everybody just said so many great things. Anywhere else in Bartlett, again, can't deny cannabis is here to stay, it is what it is, but just not in the strip mall where you have a subdivision with little kids and a daycare and families. We just don't want that in our neighborhood, that's all.
Is that it for the? Okay, any comments from anyone on the board before we continue? Go ahead.
For a building that size, this is to staff, what is the typical amount of cars per hour at a different type of establishment of that size?
It really varies based on whoever the specific users are. So you can't just give, you can't give it like a standard answer for, before with Shelby's?
And what about the opposition where they're saying 1,000 square feet versus typical Illinois code?
If you'd like me to address that, I'm happy to address that. So there's no state law mandates of distances for adult use cannabis dispensaries from sensitive uses. The state left the determination of those distances and what are sensitive uses up to each municipality. When we passed the legis, I think it probably was in 2020, maybe?
2022.
2022, when we amended the ordinance to allow dispensaries, we did not put any specific distance restrictions in. So there is no state mandate on that. Technically, the only one that applies to adult use cannabis dispensaries is you can't be within 1,500 feet of another dispensary. So that's the only one that would apply to an adult use dispensary. There was a restriction when it was only medical that had those distances and things like that, but that was 2014. They didn't put those same restrictions into the adult use cannabis law. So there is no distance restriction that, under state law or our local ordinance that applies here.
And are we going to be building this separately with a bakery versus the dispensary?
I can address that as well, I think the bakery is not part of the request. That's a permitted use by right, I believe.
We can do the bakery now. You have another? Go ahead.
I'm Linda Schmidt, 741 Duxbury Lane in Bartlett, Illinois. We moved here in November of 1987, you figure it out. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I heard the presentation earlier with the daycare and the restaurant. I thought it was exciting, but I feel for those homeowners. I, listening to everything going on in the B3 development, which is considered a residential shopping area, I want the board to know that I drove to Higgins and Roselle Road, backed up in a parking spot for an hour, and counted the cars going into Starbucks, which by the way, the logo above says Starbucks, cannabis CO. Not just Starbucks, cannabis CO. They just don't have a sign that says open. They have another sign with a banner that says open. Like one sign wasn't enough, let's put two, let's really advertise. I was frustrated. I have three daughters that are extremely intelligent from in the medical field and in this world. I couldn't be prouder. And they were not exposed to this, but what they took with them. My oldest daughter was the first graduating class with Tammy Schultz for the DARE program. We were so excited that Bartlett offered a program like this. How wonderful that our kids could learn good values. All three of mine did, just like many of yours. I don't feel having establishment advertising in a residential zone. I applaud the cannabis businesses that are freestanding, that have their own parking away from residents and children. I have a passion for daycare because my kids attended the kinder care. They would not attend kinder care if the cannabis business was there. I have a medical degree in nursing and a master's. And I've seen people affected by different drugs, not recently, but through the years. And I have a passion for families that are dealing with this. We don't need to advertise it. Remember our slogan, we belong. Bartlett is so proud of that, I'm proud of it. I go to events, it says we belong, I am thrilled to hear that. I feel like Bartlett is really there. I mean, 38 years going on to 39, and I just feel it's awesome. Our community has grown. I need, think we need to pull some common factors together and hear what everyone said and come to a conclusion that we are not going to pass this zoning ordinance for cannabis. And I did look at the plans, by the way, I want the planning and zoning to know when you go to the village to ask them to look at the plans, you get three stapled papers together that remain on the counter. The first is a letter that Mr. Warden sent out. The next two pages are diagrams. I asked, and the lady was so helpful, she guided me through how to pull it up online. I said, well, wait a second, there's 13 pages here. What happened to? What happened to the rest of the paperwork?" People are coming in and asking to see this. They're concerned, and they're being showed three pieces of paper, not 13. We're misled. If I hadn't gone online and seen what I had seen, I would not have known what was going on. I looked at the diagram. There's not a straight line. I mean, I know Sherwin-Williams. Then there's 801. Then there's 803. And you can look through the window, and there's a division. It looks very linear to me. But I look at the drawing, and I have a lounge that looks like it is incorporated into both sides, or a bakery. So I haven't seen the plans up here on the wall to identify it, but the division isn't like, here is this, and here is that. It looks like a communed development, and I'm confused about two doors going in, two ways in, two ways out, and the lounge is in the, I think it's in the back part of the facility, and who knows, maybe there's a door that people can walk out. I don't know. But all I know is when I sat at Golf in Rozelle Road for that hour, and I saw people walking in and out every one to two minutes, I was shocked. I couldn't believe it. I'm like, wow, I mean, this is a good business. But there were no homes. There was industrial. There were no daycares. There was maybe a restaurant or two, and there was a gambling place down the other end, Shelby's. And I thought, wow, this doesn't look anything like where I live. So I just want you to know, I'm hoping that you oppose this. This is just, I'm talking from the heart. I see the neighborhood. We're strong. We have compassion for Bartlett. We want Bartlett to grow in every aspect, but safety, safety is the most important thing. Thank you.
Do you want to hear from Donnell again? Has a question.
Yes.
I'm just going to keep it very, very brief, to the point with Lynn. When we hear that, I heard Mr. Asspruth say that Illinois does not have any law specifically stating how close a dispensary can be to a childcare center. That is true, but they're counting on villages, they're counting on boards like you to make those informed decisions that are in the best interest and the welfare of those children and the residents. So it's not explicitly stating it. They are counting on each and every one of you who sits on that board to make those informed decisions to protect us from the things that may harm our community. Like Lynn said, our community is strong, and we're proud residents of Bartlett. We don't want to see anything that harms our children, takes down our property values, increases crime and traffic, and all the things that we don't want to see. And we're hoping that you hear us tonight and understand how important that is to us to keep that feel, that small-town feel of what Bartlett has always been intended to be, family first. Thank you.
We're approaching 10 o'clock. Are we ready to?
I have a question of staff real quick. Is there any knowledge of surrounding villages who have dispensaries? And if those dispensaries have caused problems?
So it's my understanding that the interim police chief has contacted some of the surrounding municipalities, and none of them have had any sort of nuisance complaints.
One of the purposes of the public hearing is for everything to come out and for people's opinions to be known. And I think it was overwhelming to see all those signatures on the petition. And as for me, I am not going to vote for it because I don't think the people want that in that area. Possibly going west of 59 somewhere, I don't know. But I think it was pretty overwhelming with the signatures on the petition. We do need to make a recommendation, though, or continue it to another night.
I make a motion, we send a unfavorable.
We need to send a positive, and then you can vote yes or no.
The motion always has to be in the positive.
It has to be a positive.
I thought we've done that for years.
Thank you, George. I've not been here for years. So I would make a proposal that we send, we as a, send a positive.
Recommendation?
Recommendation for 25-4.
Based on the findings of fact?
Based on the findings of fact and whatever the-- What? And the conditions, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Charlie to recommend approval based on the findings of fact and condition. At this point, I shall close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John Miaso. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
John Bannerman.
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe.
I'm confused.
Yes or no?
About what? I don't want--
You made the motion.
Then vote no. You would vote no if you don't want to prove it.
No.
George Colesiel.
Yes.
Bob Bacaro.
No.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Julie Kapodakakis. Amy McSwain.
No.
Mike Weirden.
No.
So what's the tally?
The motion failed to pass. It was a three to five vote.
Okay, so it will still go on to the Village Board.
Old Business, New Business?
Anything with new business, old business?
Old Business, New Business? I can't, we can't hear.
Can you, can you please, and the audience, please keep the noise down? We still have to conduct the rest of the meeting to close it out. It's a no vote recommended for the Village Board is what it boils down to.
It would be the third Tuesday of the month, May 20th, I believe.
May 20th. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any new, old business?
We may have a case next month, I'm not sure yet.
Okay. Any motions to adjourn?
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Come on, Charlie. A motion to adjourn at any second?
A positive recommendation.
By George, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think I better report on my Robertson order again.
I'm actually surprised at the votes. Actually surprised at the votes.